Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Wirtha, would you please call the role?
Mayor Palat Wahado.
President.
Councilmembers Roland Barera.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Here.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter. He'll be joining by Webex, so I'm not sure if he's quite joined yet. Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pestley.
Here.
Everett Roy.
Here.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City attorney Miles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Great, thank you, Ms. Wirtha. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us. This is workshop number five, budget workshop number five, and today we'll be discussing, let's see, we're public works in streets, stormwater, solid waste, property tax rate, and exemptions. So with that, I'll hand it over to our city manager, Peter Zanoni.
Great, thank you, mayor. And we're going to begin with the last item we did not cover in the last workshop.
Thank you, yes.
Right, so that's the important sustainability and coastal resiliency initiatives.
Can you lift your microphone?
Yeah, the sustainability and coastal resiliency initiatives that we've included in the budget as proposals for the council's consideration. On our schedule, I think you covered it, mayor, is an important update on our property tax rate. It's last on the agenda, but it'll be great news for the community and the council. We do have now our certified role, that's certified values that we didn't have when we developed the proposed budget. We didn't get it until it was either later that day or the next day, working with our tax assessor-collector and running our numbers through the state worksheets that they give you. We're going to, we're going to recommend lowering our property tax rate, so even more property tax relief than would be in this budget
Wonderful.
for the community. Yes, ma'am. So Constance will go over that later on in the, in the morning. But we are going to have Eddie Houlihan, our budget director, go over the coastal resiliency initiatives that are included in the budget, just a few slides, and then we'll bring up public works after Eddie.
Good morning, mayor and council. Eddie Houlihan with the Office of Management and Budget. I got a couple of slides here on sustainability and coastal resiliency. This has been quite a topic of discussion the last several months, as you know, and we, in the end, we are not proposing a new department in this area in the FY24 budget, but we did want to highlight some existing and new programs that support these efforts. So some, some of the existing programs that we, that are in place is a Gulf Beach survey at the seawall. This is an annual survey done by Park and Rec out at Padre Island. Also, a light-up CC initiative that you've heard quite a bit about. More street sweeping is included in this budget. This includes increasing the collectors from four to six times per year and the arterials from eight to 10 times per year. Some stormwater channel maintenance for minor ditches. This, previously, there was no scheduled maintenance for these items. It was on an as-needed basis. But in year one of these, this scheduled maintenance, it would put these on a six-year cycle. The stormwater maintains about 300 miles of minor channels throughout the city. Solid waste, it's expected to be able to start the composting program in the later half of FY24. And also, the budget includes purchasing a second shredder grinder. This would be capable of shredding tires, which the one that they currently have is not capable of that, so this is a big improvement for that operation. Continuation of a tree planting program. We have 250,000 for that effort. This started in FY20, and we've done it for four, we skipped 21, the COVID year, but we've done this for four years now, the tree planting program. And then we also, in this budget, increased the funding in the hot fund for botanical gardens from 70,000 to 100,000, an increase of 30,000. Some of the new programs in the FY24 budget include the Strategic Planning and Innovation Office existing today will complete an assessment of all sustainability positions and programs. The, also, the, in, in the hot fund, we've added a tourism sustainability plan for 50,000 as recommended by the Visit Corpus Christi board. We've also included a 50,000 for a tree canopy study by the Texas Trees Foundation. Just a few more new programs in FY24. We, in this budget, we did add a deputy emergency management coordinator. We also added an additional safety coordinator in the risk area. This would increase those positions from five to six. We've also put 150,000 in the budget for some cooling and heating center enhancements, which would include general outreach, storage containers for belongings, a senior welfare check, and transportation to, to these centers. Also included is some air quality monitoring equipment for 25,000. And lastly, the generator for the Flower Bluff Police substation is included in this budget for 75,000.
Councilman Pestley?
I have several questions about this, and Peter, I voted for your pay raise, and I like you a lot, so this is not personal, but I've got some questions, okay? What, what are you looking for in a Gulf Beach survey?
Right, so that's a requirement at the Padre Island, at the seawall portion of the, of our padre, by the Windward parking lot. That seawall was put in, not following state standards, it was put in over the dune. That had some implications on the environment. So a year, many years ago, in a settlement agreement, the state and the city and developers reached an agreement that certain things had to be done. One of those is, is including an annual survey of the beach to assess erosion, given that the natural dunes aren't there anymore, but rather cement seawall. So this is a requirement with, with the state that we do this annually.
And how many years have we been doing that?
Many years, yeah, probably since the seawall was put in.
Has there been any?
Yes, there's been a lot of erosion. We have to re-nourish the entire beach, especially further south. Quite a bit. In fact, with the, with the dredging project that's on schedule for the Packard Channel, that will provide some sand, but we're still going to have to buy additional sand to nourish especially the southern portion of the beach.
Have we put together a study that looks at what the historical information looks like?
In terms of erosion?
Yes.
I'm not sure, councilman, we can look into that. I'm sure that the annual studies are referenced.
I mean, if we haven't, we should.
Yeah, I'm sure the annual studies have some reference, you know, points in them of the prior studies that were done.
Suckley, did you?
So, Councilman Pestley, I think there was an ordinance passed by the city at some point regarding that front of the seawall area, and when it narrows to less than 150 feet, they have to go ahead and restrict access to it for safety reasons. So that survey works in unison, that annual survey, in determining the width and the erosion, the effects of it in front of the seawall. I don't remember when that ordinance was, but it was
A few years ago.
Quite, quite a while ago, a number of years ago. So that annual survey, I think, has been happening, at least since that ordinance was passed.
Okay, but, but my question is, there ought to be some assimilation of the information that you've gathered from all these studies that you've done, or that we've had done, to look at how that's impacted and what's, and what sources we think, because every time you have a storm or a tropical storm or a depression or whatever, your beaches are going to erode. I mean, it's just, some places will erode, some places will fill in.
Yes, right, okay. So we'll get you that, councilman. And in fact, in this capital budget, with Councilman Suckley's advocacy, there's monies in the budget to reassess the seawall in terms of improving it and making sure it's stable to withstand a hurricane or a tropical storm. So we're going to be talking a lot about the seawall as a group, as a council, in the coming months. And so we can, we'll compile information to give you history and perspective on that section of the beach along with the seawall as a council. That'll be something that'll be on our radar quite often.
Why, Eddie, how come we don't have a, you know, most of these budgets start out with a total amount. How come we don't have a total for this?
It's four million dollars.
4.8 is the, the total, we, yeah.
4.08, right, 4.08, yeah. Or is it 4.8? I think it's 4.08 too, yeah.
Okay. It's not shown on the slides I have.
Okay, and correction, it's 4.8, right, almost 5 million, right.
Okay. All right, why is street sweeping under this and not under public works?
It's under public works. What we've done here, councilman, is given that there's been a lot of conversation for and against resiliency, we just, we're packaging everything here to show you, the council, and persons that have interest either for or against. It's just a show in total. So things like the, a lot of these things are budgeted in other departmental budgets, like the street sweeping, like the channel maintenance, like the deputy emergency management coordinator. In fact, everything's budgeted somewhere, but we're just saying, if we want to look at this in total, this is in total what's in the budget in all departments.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in because I think this is pertinent to, to your point. So this is not additional allocation?
No.
Okay, well, that's very important to note on here, Peter.
Very important to note on here.
Because this looks like it's, and, and whatever it may be, it's not clear then. Because if this is already allocated, then we absolutely need to make sure the public knows that, and we know that.
Well, that's, that's why Eddie has listed these under, under continuation of existing programs. That's the header on slide three, as opposed to the next slide which says new programs.
Yeah, but continuation of existing program could mean that it was a program started in 2004. I mean, some of these, yeah.
Yeah, but, I, I mean, regardless, Peter, the point is, is to say, these are, these monies are already budgeted in the different departments.
Okay.
It's not a new allocation. And honestly, I did not realize that, and this morning, I didn't explain that. I wish I had known that. Somebody called in and, and made mention about these dollars, and so I didn't realize these were, these are already in specific budgets. So that's real important to note.
Is, is the solid waste composting, is that covered in the, in the, another budget as well?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, in solid waste, yes, sir.
Did we ever get our composting program off the ground?
Yes, yes, it's off the ground. We're getting the permits by TCEQ. We're in the final stretches of their permitting process.
Okay. And where is the tree planting program? Where is that?
That's in our Parks Department, and so this year, we've planted trees, you may recall, at the Han Suda Park area, both with city money and then with monies that we receive from the electric company that we buy power from as a city organization.
So, and, and on page four, you've got existing strategic planning and innovation office. I didn't know we had one of those.
We do.
To complete assessment of all sustainability positions and programs. What does that mean?
So instead of, and then listening to the council and the community both for and against us, one thing that dawned on us is, I don't have a good, we don't have a good handle on what departments have what in terms of sustainability persons or initiatives. A lot of them have it, take solid waste, we recycle. Take our water department, we conserve water and we minimize impacts.
So what does sustainability mean?
It mean, well, let me just finish this thing here if I can. So, so what we're going to do is the strategic planning office, there, it's a business development assessment unit, kind of like an audit function. It's a three-person team we have. And so one of the things we're going to put on their work plan early on for this new fiscal year is a look at the entire organization to see what programs and what positions we have that have anything to do with sustainability, the environment, that type of thing.
So what is tourism sustainability? What does that mean?
Right, so that is, there are several consultants that Brett Otting, the CEO of Visit Corpus Christi, has used. Many cities across the country look at their tourism, their tourist destination, like the beach or the, or the Gulf Beach, and they say, what do we have to do to make this a desirable place for people to continue to come to? Do we need more trash cans? Do we need more beach nourishment?
Is this $50,000 in the Visit Corpus Christi budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, again, as the mayor said, I don't know why we're showing it here. The tree canopy study, where is that contained? And what is that exactly going to entail, and why do we need to spend $50,000 studying tree canopies?
It's a recommendation, councilman. Many cities in Texas have done this, which is when they invest in tree planting, it's good to have an idea of where you have worst vulnerabilities, where are the least amount of trees. We're planting trees, but we're not 100% sure of, are we hitting the areas that need it most? I ask questions about Han Suda. Is this the best place to plant trees, as an example? I don't have information because we haven't, we haven't done a survey, so this is a recommendation to say a tree foundation, the Texas Tree Foundation.
So who are we going to hire to make that recommendation?
The Texas Tree Foundation.
And what are they going to, I mean, they're going to come in and set, we're going to pay them $50,000?
That's a, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's going to be exactly 50, but that's a budgeted amount based on their input to us that, that's, it would be a rate in and around that area.
And what's the necessity for the addition of an emergency management coordinator for 50,000?
So we're, we, we have one position, which is Billy Delgado, to manage all aspects of emergency management in the fire department. We've, we've determined that it's, we probably need some redundancy, some assistance for Billy. He manages things to include hurricanes, but extreme weather events like we're having now. If Billy goes out sick, or if he's out, there's nobody
But I thought each department had, had their own
They do, but we're talking central coordination, so there's a lead that helps us. Whenever there's something going on, we all call Billy. And all 29 departments has somebody that calls Billy. Somebody has to be in charge, that's Billy. We need some redundancy. The city's too vulnerable to only have one person managing that.
So we, we don't have anybody in our staff that could fulfill that? I mean, we have 400 and something, almost 450 firefighters. All of them are, are trained in, in emergency of all kinds. We have a police force that has hundreds of, of men and women who are trained to do those kind of things, and we don't have anybody we can appoint on a temporary basis. Instead, we're going to go out and hire and create a new position at $50,000 a year?
That's what we're recommending, councilman. You know, the police and firefighters that you mentioned, they're out on the street or they're in the fire stations.
Not all the time. I mean, they, they work in shifts.
Yeah.
And in an emergency situation, I don't know why we couldn't find somebody who could fulfill that position, especially in the fire department. I just don't, I don't understand why we're going to hire another person and pay $50,000 a year, Peter, when we have, how many firefighters?
Uh, 450, 455? After this budget, 455.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, councilman, it's not a good investment to necessarily do that. The firefighters are paid at a double the rate and with their benefits, but they're, right now, we're short on four-person staffing on fire trucks. We only have a small portion of our fire companies that go out with four persons on a truck.
This budget's going to approve
Nine positions to move
To positions to raise it to four persons.
Not all companies. I think it's, I think we'll be at like eight of, I don't know, the total number, 25, something like that. We're still, we're going, it's going to take us five years, add some pretty additional adds to get to that full four, four-person staff.
And, and what, what are we going to do with air monitoring equipment?
So right now, we do have 25,000 that we use for an outside group to monitor air, and we, we're saying we're not sure if that's a good investment yet. So we put this on the table just to say the 25,000 could be used to continue that contract with an outside group, or we could do some self-performing contract with an outside group, or we could do some self-performing when it comes to air quality.
I mean, I don't see the, why the city would want to get in and spend taxpayers' money to do that, when we have all kinds of organizations already doing that.
Well, we're doing it right now.
At free cost to us.
Yeah, right now, we're spending $25,000 of taxpayer money. So, what we're saying is, we're not sure if that's a good investment.
Well, then, maybe we shouldn't be.
That's another option, you could zero it out completely.
Okay. And, and the fire station generator, that was in the police department's budget?
That's the police department, right. That's not in their budget, it would be new monies added in their budget, to add this generator at the, at the Fall Bluff Police Substation.
Well, Peter, I just want to say, there's a lot of this I have a great deal of concern about. And one of the things I haven't started asking yet, but we need to start thinking about, is when we look at each one of these budgets, we should be telling the budget managers, okay, we appreciate what you're presenting, but if you had to cut something, where would you cut?
Right.
And, because it's one thing to say that we're going to reduce taxes, but when people's appraisals go up double, that's not a tax decrease. And so, we, we can't play that game with taxpayers. And, and we need to look at everything we're doing, and, and these $48,000, and $50,000, and $55,000, and all those add up, at the end of the day, to millions of dollars.
Right.
That we have to fund. And so, I'll, I'll have more to say about this later, but I have a great deal of concern about, we seem to be doing this in every budget. We have all these little bitty things that we keep adding on every year and year, and our budget is increasing by $100 million from last year.
Right. That includes the capital budget as well.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, great comments. I think we need to be adding a slide to all of this, Peter, this whole, this whole process. When we're able to say, and, and we've got lots of comments, I'll just say this and move on, but when we're able to say that our budget is, and we're proud of that, we now have a 1.5 billion, a 1.4, 1.2, there's got to be a slide on, here's how we can send this back to the taxpayer. Whether through rates, as opposed to just adding, adding, adding. I understand, I do under, I understand there is, you don't just go throw trees here and there. And I understand that might not be a priority of, of a majority. You know, it, it's a plan. When you're building a home, you have a plan, because you got to know where the closets go, or where the, you know, this go, that room goes. But, but I also think, with such an increase in, in a budget, I really feel that we do need to be more cognizant, because on one hand, we're, we're adding all these things, and then on the other, we're raising rates. And, and, and there isn't ever a great time to raise rates. But today especially, is a very, very difficult time for people to, to raise rates across the board. I, and, and I realize, we have operational, that's part of this job, and that's part of the hardship of being elected. But we also should be given a choice of, and here's how we can maybe bring, this, this all does go back in quality of life, but there should also be, how do we use this money to keep from raising for, for the taxpayer? So, anyway, with that, I understand, you guys are bringing, you're doing your job, you're, you're bringing to us, for consideration, different, different options and, and things to, to consider. Councilman Hernandez.
Peter, I appreciate your effort in trying to explain some of the things we are, we already doing. I think that was some of the arguments we had made early on, about there are some things that we're doing for sustainability that are built into what we're doing, like things that solid waste are doing. You didn't mention our recycling program as being part of that, which I think you made, that was amiss there. And I understand your position, you're kind of between a rock and a hard place. You have council members that don't want it, council members that do, you're in the middle, right? So, I appreciate your position, you're, you're in a lose-lose situation, okay? I'm, I'm sympathetic to that, even though I didn't vote for your pay raises, I'm sympathetic to your position. But I did, I did have some questions on some of these, on some of these items specifically. The cost of the assessment, and being in part of your strategic planning department, I didn't see any funding for any assessment. Is this going to be something, some, you know, I'd always, when we brought on the strategic planning, I always assumed of it as a, kind of a lean Six Sigma clearinghouse, to look at processes, to see if we're doing things in a, in a, in a efficient way. Now, I haven't seen any reports on that, as to, you know, what changes have been made. I know you've trained some, several people in, in Six Sigma, and, but I haven't seen any results from that, and any kind of process changes yet. I would assume that this is something along those lines. Is that correct?
The, I'm not sure if I, I'm not sure if I 100% understand your question, Councilman, but they're going to, the strategic planning will just, they're going to do an inventory, just so we know. There's been comments made by the community at the podium here, saying that you all already have people in your departments that focus on this.
Right.
Nobody has ever done an assessment of it. So, this is, this will probably be a short assessment, it's not going to take months, probably won't take much time at all, but.
But it's just internal, right?
It's just internal, we're not paying any, we're not, with the staff that's on board, or on board, we're not bringing on new staff to do this assessment, we're not paying a consultant to do it. We're just saying, we would, I want to know, what do we have in the 29 departments that have anything to do with sustainability? What's the position? What programs do we have? Because we have a lot, but we don't even know it. So, this is to tell us, tell me, as the city manager, and tell the council and the community, if we ever wanted to say, hey, in our budget, with 29 departments, this is what we do right now, for the environment, for sustainability, this will tell us that. So, it's a quick review. This same unit, Councilman, just to give you an example of what they do, do, right now, they're still working on, what do the departments do when it comes to maintenance? How many of them use Maximo? How frequent are they maintaining things? What type of inventories do they have? How many people perform maintenance? Is it in-house? Is it contractual? So, that's one of the things this unit does.
So, when I say Six Sigma, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of process improvement.
Right.
Way of doing things, right? Is this your process improvement department? Your strategic planning, is it a process improvement department?
It's a, it's a process improvement, it's a business analytics department. They, the same unit, as an example, helped us when we migrated from a dual system in the Health District to a one, one-owner process. So, that's not really lean Six Sigma, but they helped us in the, in the analysis, in the budget analysis, they helped us with engaging employees. So, they're not strictly lean Six Sigma, all we're going to focus on is efficiency, is business processes, like the one we're doing right now, when it comes to maintenance. The goal ultimately is to be more efficient and have better maintenance. But some of the stuff right now, they're doing is just assessment, just inventory, going into the departments and really going in and seeing, are they really using Maximo? How are they, how do they determine what maintenance is? You know, that type of thing.
Okay. I think we'll have a different conversation that offline, I need to understand that better. You say, you have a safety coordinated position that you're adding, what department is that going to be in?
That would be in our, it's in our city attorney's office, but it's in our risk management unit.
Okay, so, risk management is a internal service fund, right?
That's correct, yes, sir. Right.
Okay, so, is that, that's going to be in the risk management?
So, with the extreme temperatures we had this summer, we recently, I did, engaged all the departments to see what's your protocol for keeping our employees safe in these extreme temperatures. And what we found is, is extreme divergence in how we do that. What we also found out is, we have five employees that focus on 4,000, to make sure they're safe in all aspects of their job. We, we felt that that's not enough. So, this is a recommendation to add an additional position to help us with the 4,000 employees in all aspects of their job, whether it's digging a trench, whether it's climbing a ladder, whether it's outside in 110-degree temperatures.
Okay. Your air quality mon, I want to understand this.
Right.
I assumed we had a position that, that did air quality monitoring, but did we, I guess we're contracting that out now?
No, so, we have a position, and right now, it's in the Health Department, it's vacant.
Okay.
We also have, in this current year budget, $25,000 that's used for a air, I don't know the exact name, but it's a non, it's a consortium of the Port of Corpus Christi, the city, the county, I think San Pat, that is a kind of a quasi-governmental unit. We contribute $25,000 to that annually, out of the budget right now. This, this recommendation is to say, we want to see, is that an efficient use of the monies, or should we use that money to do our own monitoring with the position in the Health Department, i.e. buying equipment to help us monitor the air, or buying other services?
Well, to Councilman Pusley's point of, there's a lot of organizations that do air quality and monitoring. I mean, every port industry does their own air quality monitoring, I'm sure the port does.
We do as well, right.
I'm, I'm wondering if there's some synergy we can, we can do with some other organization, whether it's the port, another government entity, or, you know, whatever's out there. I think Councilman Klein had, had reached out to me about trying to get grants from the COG, and get, because we, they do environmental grants, and not, the ones I've seen have not been for air quality, it's been mainly water quality.
Right.
And solid waste. But I think there's some opportunity there, to where we don't have to do everything ourselves, we can do, you know, we don't monitor salinity levels in the bay ourselves, we contract that out, we don't monitor the, the erosion on the, ourselves, we contract that out, erosion on the beach. So, I think maybe there's some synergies we can do there, that doesn't necessarily have to be in-house, especially if you can't fill the position. And I did talk to Dr. Khan about that, having that, that position, but.
Right.
Maybe, this is where that efficiency thing comes in, and the processes that we do, can we do these things better, or can we partner up with somebody else that is already doing them?
Right. The recommendation, Councilman, is made in part, because when we do rely, and this, we do rely on other people for air quality, in cases that I've been here, that we've had to do that, that they failed. We can't get information. And so, take a Saturday event, I don't know if you recall this one, where there was some extreme fires, they were doing a controlled burn, and it got out of hand, all of downtown, you couldn't even see out the window. And so, people were calling me, saying, what's going on, city manager? And I'm like, hell, if I know, nobody here is telling me anything. So, we tried calling people to figure out, it took us hours to figure stuff out, so, that's relying on other people. Yeah, that's just one example.
It's an interesting comment you say, because when we have an issue at the, at the refineries, and the fire department has to go out, but they go to the fence line and monitor, and monitor the situation.
Right.
But they also monitor the air quality. Is it, is the fire department not capable of that?
So, this site, this wasn't in the city limits, it was out in San Pat, the burn was, the point being that we rely in the private sector, and we're about efficiency, but sometimes having access to our own information.
What I'm asking is, there's nobody else in the city that does air quali, air monitoring, or air quality monitoring?
No, they do. So, the fire department, we know, does air monitoring. The Health Department, when we fill that position, does some level. The point is, the city has minimal air quality instrumentation and, and self-performing analysis, but people tend to call us if there's an issue. And so, this is saying, we think we need a little more management of it ourselves, so we can have quicker access to data. There's been numerous occasions this summer where the air quality's poor outside, and we don't get good information, nor do we, as an organization, provide that to the community that might have risked our problems.
Okay, I don't want to take up more time on this, but I think that probably need to have a better understanding for us as a council before going forward on that, especially what you need. Thank you.
Councilwoman Camps.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilman Pusley and Hernandez, Councilman Hernandez. I think Peter has done a really good job in explaining that we're not, some of the sustainability initiatives that we're doing, it's not adding. Yes, I was one of the ones that was advocating. As a matter of fact, I was pointing out earlier this week, or last week, that we use a lot of times, the analogies are from other cities, that, you know, other cities have, for example, when we gave our city manager a raise, we based it on other cities, on what, what they're, what they're paying their city manager. So, we use that frame all the time. We, we did the same thing for collective bargaining, when we were, you know, giving, or considering giving our firefighters and, and our fire departments raises. So, we actually ignored that for this position, the position that, that I was advocating for, which was for an environmental sustainability department. But what Peter has done, and like, like Councilman Hernandez said, you know, he's between a rock and a hard place, because I know, I mean, we all know, we live in a very sensitive area, we are a coastal city. As a matter of fact, when I saw the beach study, I really thought that it was going to include McGee Beach, because McGee Beach is another, one of our, our city, or our city beach that we use all the time. And as a matter of fact, we just had, you know, the soccer ball tournament just done recently, and we need to make sure that we protect our assets. So, the, you know, I know that there's still questions, and, and maybe it's the way that it's framed, but we should not be afraid. We should not be afraid to, to invest in our city, whether, the other thing that really makes me pause, and I, I said that, that actually, if we were to have that position, that it would probably pay for itself. And the reason that I say that is because we do have money out there in the state and federal budgets, that is moving more towards resiliency for green. But we have to have someone applying for those grants, and like our city manager's trying to do is, we're trying to find out if we are, are already doing, how much of resiliency and environmental efforts are we already doing? And I, I just think that this, this budget, this really small budget, I forget, is it 0.3%? I think that, on this four, four million, on the 1.5 billion? I mean, it's, it's very, very small, compared to the larger picture. We invest, you know, so much in our fire, and our police, and all we're asking here is just to protect, again, one of those things that is vital, you know, to the citizens of Corpus Christi. For years, I sat, I think seven years in the park and rec, and you know why I sat on that board? For one reason, I wanted an urban forester, okay? An urban forester, it's not even here, I'm sitting on this dais, and I can't even get that, you know? So, again, it's one of those things that every other city, if our size, if not smaller, has an urban forester in their staff, but we don't have that. We have over 300,000 people living in our city, and we can't have that? And one of the smallest things, you know, that they would be doing is that, tree canopies. Tree canopies is something that is, you know, we're just so far behind. Again, you know, 20 years ago, I sat on that board, asking, and, and you know what their answer was always? There was no money. We have no money. We have no money. Well, now is the time for us to look at ourselves, and look at this budget, and say, you know what? This is a start. I, believe it or not, I am willing, you know, to accept this budget. I would like more. Like I said, I would love to have an urban forester, but I am willing to accept this for now, and hopefully, my, my other council members will support this. We have a long way to go, and we do have a lot of passion on both sides. But I think, for now, this is something that, that we should all support. So, with that, I leave you.
Thank you, Ms. Camps. Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, Mayor. I had some of the same questions that some of the other council folks had. I had a good conversation with Michael over the weekend about them, though, so I got, I got most of them answered. But one thing, with this being my first time going through this budgeting process, Councilman Roy may support this as well, but from a banker's standpoint, when I'm looking at budgets and financials and things, I focus on trend analysis. And the one thing that kind of catches me, is going through all these, these budget workshops, is I'd like to see what historically we did last year versus this year. And this would be a prime example of helping us understand of what's new for 2024 versus what was in 2023. So, I would ask that going forward, if we could at least get some, maybe just a one-page on each department, that shows us, this is what this portion was in 2023, this is what's proposed in 2024, and then having a common-sized column that says, this is the percentage says, this is the percentage difference that we're looking at. That would help me immediately to know of things that I can help key in on and ask questions about. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Most of the, most of the 24 new stuff would be in the, the enhancements and some of the PowerPoints that you've seen, the ones that we highlighted. There's other things too, but those were the big things that, that have been highlighted in their enhancement section. We can do that, sure.
Councilman Pasley, right? Is that your line? Yeah, Councilman Pasley.
Yeah, so, so excellent point, Councilman Suckley. In fact, I sent an email a couple of weeks ago to Peter, asking for that very same thing to be included, so that we can look at what the trend is from year to year. I mean, I said we ought to go all the way back to 2022 or 2020, and look at what each department has done over that course of that time period, to see where, what's growing and what's exponentially growing, and then to see what areas we need to focus on with respect to, to our cost, and, and try to determine, maybe in some situations, why those costs have escalated to the point that they have. But I want to go back to the air quality monitoring just a moment. And Peter, I understand about the brush fire and you not being able to find out what's going on, but if you have a person sitting here doing that...
It's not, yeah.
And so how are they going to be able to determine what's going on faster than you would, or somebody from the fire department would?
The difference is that they would report to us and the city, and they would be accountable. And if they don't answer the phone, and they're derelict in their duties, we can do something about it. If a other entity is derelict in their duties, doesn't, is non-responsive, we can't do anything about it, except maybe not fund them again. That's the difference.
Yeah, but how are they going to ascertain, you know, they're going to have to pick up and make the same phone calls that you're making now, to try to ascertain where that, what that information is. It's a duplication of effort.
Okay, you can, if that's how you see it. But the way we see it is that it's, if we can't get in touch with somebody, and they're there, and they're non-responsive, there's nothing I can do about it. You know, I can't tell them, hey, we need you to pick up the phone when we call you.
I mean, if there's a grass fire in San Patricio County, that, you know, if you can look out the window and say, well, there's a grass fire over there, we'll have to get somebody with the fire department to find out what the situation is.
Yeah, that's just one example, Councilman, but it includes things like poor air quality, where when you look out the city hall window, or just standing outside, the air looks terrible, and you're like, God, I wonder if that's bad for, you know, persons with respiratory illness?
But, but that's why we have all those air monitoring systems that are along the port now.
My, okay. All right.
I mean, they, they put those in years and years ago, and monitor them and provide that information to the community. And I'm sorry, I can't remember her name right now. She used to...
At the port? Sharon Bailey?
But no, there was a...
Oh, Danielle.
Not Danielle, hell, the, we used to have the meetings over at the, where the Development Services Building is. Anyway, I'll think of her name in a minute, but we used, and she would sum all that data for us and present it to us.
Oh.
On a, on a monthly basis.
I'm not sure who that is.
You know who I'm talking to.
The one who started, yes. She's, she retired now.
Yeah, she's retired now.
Yeah.
And we used to get that information.
Well, that, that's who we have the contract with.
This is with this $25,000?
Yeah.
Right.
The Coastal Air Quality Association, or whatever they're called.
That was a relatively new one. This $25,000 is in the budget today. So maybe to further explain it, the question for the council is, do we want to continue with the, this consortium and pay them $25,000? Or do we want to use that for something else? Or do we want to delete it altogether? So it's in the budget. This is not new money, it's $25,000 in the budget for a consortium. Do we want to give the consortium the 25? Or do we want to use it here in the city with our health department? That's the question. Or do we want to delete it?
And do our own air quality, correct?
Yeah. I, I just think, anything we bring inside here and try to do gets 10 times more expensive than we can pay somebody else to do it. And we have to be really careful about that. So, thank you.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. I had just a couple of questions about some of these proposed programs. Coming back to the air quality monitoring, I don't want to maybe get too far into the weeds on this, but do we know what they're going to monitor with regard to air? Because there's different air monitors out there, TCQ monitors for ozone, I'm not sure how much they monitor for NOx, for sulfur dioxide, for PM 2.5, PM 10, VOCs like benzene, that sort of thing as well. And then there's also been an issue with the TCQ air monitors that are already in place, that they're not really located where people tend to congregate. One of the big areas of congregation in the city is readily right along SPID at the mall, as well as the Moore Plaza on the flip side of, of SPID. And if, if our concern is maintaining kind of public health, or the danger to public health from, from air quality, that might be something to consider, I guess, for the location of an air monitor.
That's a good point, Councilman. So admittedly, the city doesn't have a good program internally, when it comes to air monitoring, so I can't answer any of those questions. This is to say that we have one position, zero operating dollars. And so do we want to allocate this for something like you're talking about, having air monitoring stations or devices that we can have access to readily, that are in places where the people congregate? So, right.
And then you're talking about a tree canopy study as well. Would that kind of a study, would that identify what they call heat islands in the city, areas that are, where there's, there are temperatures, either because of asphalt or cement or whatever, tends to get hot, hotter, and stay hotter longer throughout the day than into the night?
We could, we could include that in the scope of work. I think it does, from the examples that we saw from other Texas cities. And that's something that we could request in this analysis.
Okay. And one last question I want to ask about as well, on the storage containers regarding the heating, cooling and heating centers, as I said before, I think this is a very good idea. What I'm wondering about though is, is there, will there be a study done to determine the effectiveness of the program, to see whether people are using it or not, I guess?
Right, yes, sir, Councilman. So right now, we're piloting this initiative at our La Rata Library. We have one Connex box and a kind of a protocol process with library staff, that's, that helps to check in homelessness belongings, and then they lock the Connex box, and that homeless person has a card or whatever that is redeemed to get their materials back. So daily, we're monitoring the number of patrons that are using that. We're also getting comments on efficiencies and just general customer service. And so that'll help us determine, should this program continue?
Right.
And at what scale, and at what location. This is, we've looked around the country to see, as we began the pilot, to see, is anybody else doing something like this? And the answer was no. So we're being innovative in this case. We know that with the extreme temperatures, the heat indices today will be 120 degrees. Having access for even persons that are homeless to cooling centers is important.
Yeah.
But we know that a lot of them don't want to leave their belongings, and you can't bring excessive amount of belongings into the public facilities of the libraries. So we're piloting it right now, before we, before we continue it, or, and to answer the question, should we continue it at all?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And just one, this last, I guess, comment. The tourism sustainability plan recommended by Visit Corpus Christi, I thought I heard Brett Odin say this Thursday, it was Thursday, it must have been Tuesday, I guess, Tuesday morning before the council meeting, that last year Corpus Christi tourism brought in, into Corpus Christi, $1.4 billion.
Right, yeah, that, that sounds about right, Councilman.
Yeah, all right.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Roy.
You know, I want to kind of add on to what council member Suckley said. You know, I've, from the beginning of this process, and I can only compare it to the last three budgets that I was in when I was on council before, and in which it was a little bit different in terms of, because during that period of time, if I remember right, we basically were looking at cutting almost every department, every, you know, and that's what they focused on. And there wasn't a, it certainly wasn't an increase in terms of looking at the overall budget. But as I've sat here through this process, especially when you take, you take someone like a banker that is used to looking at the analyticals to substantiate what we do or justify what we do, and I, and I look at the process and how we're going through, and I keep thinking to myself, at some point in time, I'm going to see that. At some point in time, I'm going to understand the justification of why we want more. And, but I can tell you right now that it's not working that way. I'm actually, as I sit through these meetings and through these presentations, I'm actually becoming more nervous in terms of thinking that we're not going to get to that process. And it goes back to what I said in our last budget meeting on Tuesday afternoon, is that we were asking for things. Oh, I want to double, or whatever, increase the, the kennels by X amount. Okay, why do we need that? Well, because we have a 20% increase in demand right now, but we want to increase 60%. Okay, well, why do you do that? Because there's a projected increase of animals, or what's the case? So I, as I'm watching this, it almost reminds me of when I talk to my kids about what do they want for Christmas, or what do they want for their birthday or whatever? It's just a laundry list of things without necessarily justification. And, and that concerns me. That concerns me a lot, because, and, and I've heard, well, we've got council members that agree on this, or council, but it's really not the council members here. We're here to represent the, our constituents and the community. It's their, it's the community's budget. It's the community's money. It's the taxpayers' money. It's not what I want. I need to be able to make sure that, probably the most important thing that we do here as a council member is looking at this budget, and making sure that we adopt a budget that we can feel comfortable with. And so I get the reason why you want to show this in terms of what we're doing already to justify sustainability, but it is confusing. And, and if it wasn't for the fact that I was reading the other departments, I go, wait a minute, this is exactly the same dollar amount that we were doing in other areas. This is a duplication. So it is a little bit misleading. But I will tell you that I can't, in good conscience, as a council member, adopt a budget that I can't see the justification in. So we, we need to be able to see at the end. We need to, okay, if we were at, at 1.4 billion, and now we're at 1.5 billion, which is $100 million more, I want to know every increase of that $100 million and where it's going, because I need to be able to understand that hopefully through these presentations, that I can find the justification. If not, I'm not going to vote for it. And that's just plain and simple. And, and we, we got to be able to do it. We've got to, I think we need to sharpen the process here, because we're sitting here, spending a lot of time listening to wish lists, and we got to get away from that.
Thank you, Councilman Roy. Councilwoman Camples.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmen. I just, I have to say something. I, when you, I heard you say about the Christmas, okay, the comparison of you ask your children, you know, what they want, you know, for Christmas. How about treating these departments, at least some of them, that they've never even had a Christmas, because really, we, they've been without for a long, long time. So let me just point that out. The other is, you did say about the increase of $100 million, right, to the budget. And if you add up these amounts that, that the new programs, it adds up to half a million, half a million from $100 million. That's what we're talking about. Anyway, I wanted to also just clarify about the air monitoring. That's the main reason that I wanted to speak is, okay, the air monitor, just like we, you know, Councilman Pasley had said earlier, that we have, you know, the fire department to call for, you know, the air quality, or, you know, can't they be faster at doing this? That has been the problem. The problem has been that we don't have really, I mean, we've, we've been without a air monitor coordinator, or whatever that position is called, for a while. But we also don't have our, as far as I know, do we have our own equipment?
No, we don't, Councilman.
That's what I thought. Okay, so when you don't have your own equipment, you have to rely on, you know, other entities to respond or to get that information. So, I mean, this is just a start. And, and this is not even saying that we're, it says air quality monitoring, okay, for $25,000. This is, you know, peanuts.
Can I just interject?
Go ahead.
I think you missed my point.
Okay.
My point is, I don't, I really personally, whether we do the air quality for $25,000 or not, that's not the case. There's a bigger picture than I'm looking at here.
Okay.
And in terms of the, you know, these things that we're doing, the $25,000, I don't have a problem with that. But what I'm saying is, overall, in terms of the process, and that's my point that I was trying to make.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
At the end of the day, I need to be comfortable in terms of the entire budget.
Yeah, okay.
$25,000 out of...
And you know what, it would help us.
$1.5 billion is, is nothing.
You're right. It would help all of us, if we knew the previous budget from all the departments, to what we're allocating for this year. So yes, it would be helpful.
Right, and Councilman Pasley did request that. So when we get into the departmental budget presentation, which is Public Works, which is next up, you're going to see that? We have a three-year trend, just as he requested. And then also in our budget materials, the budget book that we, that's online, we gave to council, has three-year trends.
Right, okay.
The data's in there.
Yeah.
And we can also certainly provide a list of where the, the substantial increases, the major increases in this budget are, certainly.
Thank you. I think one last comment before we move on. Councilman Barretta.
As, thank you, Mayor. As I, I liked, as I've started to try to say more and more myself, maybe it's because I'm trying to convince myself that all feedback is good. What is it? So I think for the purpose of what went on, it's, it's, it's great for us to take an inventory of things we're doing already. So I can, I can appreciate that. But I, yeah, I'm just going to reiterate, yeah, let's, let's find out where we've been, what we're doing, and that we have a way to coordinate it all. And I think between somebody that already works here, we can say, you know, what is it that, that we're doing to coordinate it all and tie it all in a nice bow? You know, with regard to emergency management, you know, I, I, I understand where my, my good friend over here has his concerns, and, but, you know, I think Billy's doing a stand-up job, and he needs, he needs, he needs some more support. I mean, I just want to state that for my, just for the sake of that. I don't like to contradict people unless it's guilt, but, you know. But, yeah, thank you, thank you. It's, it's begin, it's becoming more fun over the five years. Anyway, so I, I think that's the thing, you know, that was really the whole thing. We, we didn't get enough credit for things we're doing. And now that we're doing them, we need to ensure that we are getting credit for it. And I think that's really what this whole exercise is trying to determine, and what we're doing. So, but, but yeah, hopefully this has been a learning experience for all of us, because it's just become a political football. And it seems like every, every day, every Tuesday during public comment, we're watching over here. And then meanwhile, there's those of us that are victims, because we get shot, you know, from spitwads in a crowd, and it gets frustrating. So hopefully, hopefully by putting this, we can at least bring more attention to the good things we are doing, and what is it, and let the community know that we're trying to be, we have to be good stewards of their funds. Particularly, you know, I know we're going to talk about it later, and it's going to be another hot button, is when we talk about utility rates. You know, I'm glad to hear, hopefully, the good news, property tax rate and exemptions, what is it?
The rate reduction.
Yeah, the rate reduction. So hopefully that's good news, and it helps offset some of this. But thank you, thank you, staff, for the hard work you do.
Thank you, Eddie. I think that concludes this presentation, and we'll move on to Public Works.
There you go. Thank you, Eddie. Okay, Ernesto Delagarza, our Public Works Director, is now going to present the Public Works budget, as well as the stormwater budget, which is a big part of Public Works.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Ernesto Delagarza, Director of Public Works. With me this morning are my three assistant directors, Gabriel Nohosa, Manuel Hernandez, Renee Couture. Additionally, I have additional budget staff here, Nicole Sapata Marisa, and then additional Public Works staff to answer any questions that might come up during this presentation. And then also Gabriel Nohosa will serve as our fee expert for today, so he's been doing a great job with that. The Public Works Department is comprised of two funds, the Streets Fund, and then the Stormwater Fund. And so this presentation, I'll begin with the Street Fund for fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. All right, so Streets, mission statement. Our mission statement is to manage, maintain, develop the city street transportation system. The pictures show here are some services that we provide within our Streets Department and our Traffic Department. So that's just our, our team, hard at work. And then some metrics or some, some assets that, that we manage, we have over 1,200 central line miles. We have over 1,200 centerline miles of streets in our network, 25 of which are concrete roadways, over 50,000 traffic signs, and then 254 signalized intersections that our traffic section maintains regularly. All right, so for this this presentation and the stormwater presentation, we're going to use the same org org chart, but overall, there's 281 positions for Public Works as a whole, but for this portion of the presentation, 159 of those positions are are street team positions. And so if you look, if you look at those those FTE counts, to your left, you have the 38, it's in real small, so I apologize, but to the left, under the Assistant Director of Traffic, we have 38 FTEs. Under Support Services, 10 FTEs. Under Engineering Services, 15 FTEs. And then under the Street, it's 95. And then I am I am also paid out of the Street Fund, and so that's how you get to the 159. And then there on the asterisk for Street Operations, you know, just to summarize, we have the pothole repair program. We have six crews in there. The in-house street rehabilitation, that's our IMP team. There's two crews in there. And then the utility cut restoration, two crews there. And then the basin utility repair is one crew there. All right, so for the 2023 achievements, for achievement number one, April 25, 2023, we received council approval to move forward with our payment-only approach. This kicked off our pay, our pilot program to review our production rates, repair methodologies, and in-house testing data collection. Since beginning our program February 28, we set out to complete 20 streets in the five districts. We have we have track good progress and to date, we have completed the four centerline miles in 67 working days. In the second achievement, in June of 2023, we hired our payment asset manager along with two testing technicians and one utility ADA coordinator. That was part of the enhancements from '23. Since coming on board, our asset manager has hit the ground running, leading testing on 26 projects and coordinated the first of its kind, falling weight deflectometer and ground penetration radar testing on Ocean Drive, working with a consultant. And so that testing was to develop the robust data-backed 10-year maintenance plan, which also is a budget initiative established in '23. Our our third achievement is the implementation of our rideaway teams and fees. This was kickstarted in fiscal year 2023, which was approved as a budget initiative. We have hired three out of four requested positions so far, all of which are currently making sure that private developers are providing safe traffic control on our city streets with proper utility cut repairs as outlined in our city policies. And then the fourth achievement, May of 2022, the city partnered with AEP Texas in conversion, in a conversion project to upgrade existing streetlights. In collaboration with the city's Finance Department and AEP Texas, we have converted roughly 15,000 streetlights from existing technologies to the LED technology. We will build upon this achievement by performing a citywide assessment of all lighting infrastructure to ensure that the city is safely lit up. All right, to our streets performance measures. So currently, our city street network payment condition index is 65. With our new payment-only approach, we're projecting a targeted PCI of 69.59. Since we will not physically raid our streets until fiscal year 2025, we'll more likely, more than likely see that in the 70 range. As noted on our city council presentation on April 25, promoting our payment-only approach, we anticipate to fix our roads with a PCI of 55 or lower at a five times faster rate. This is going from six centerline miles to approximately our targeted 31 centerline miles for 2024. And then finally, our current number of signalized intersections that are connected to our traffic management center via fiber optic cable or wireless communication is is 220. For fiscal year 2023, we're working to connect one and then have a target to connect two additional ones by 2024. And then, you know, the intent of that is that the traffic management center serves as a brain behind the city's intelligent transportation system. This system consists of cameras, communications, and central monitoring systems that intend to reduce traffic congestion and then manage incidents related to weather accidents or special events. And connectivity to our traffic signals allows Public Works to view traffic conditions in real time to modify operations as needed.
Ernie, and if council and if the media is listening, there's two important things on this chart. One is our street conditions are better, and you all have asked for trends. So just over the three years, we're, they're getting better by five points on a scale of one, zero to 100. So in 2022, there was 65, the PCI score. There'll be almost 70 in 2024 based on Ernesto and his team's work. So that's tremendous. We've heard nothing about our streets are getting worse over the prior years. They're getting better. They're at a 70. And then secondly, we're paving today less than six miles of streets, and Ernesto and his approach is going to, I guess, what is that, quadruple or triple?
Five times faster.
Five times faster. We're going to be doing 31 miles next year. That's, those are some good headlines, just to point out. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Ernie, I want, before you jump off this page, with respect to the signalized management system, so is this in addition to what you have now or is this going to be a brand-new system you're bringing online?
So we, the the inventory is 254 intersections. And then what we're saying is that we're, ideally, we'd like to have all of them plugged into our traffic management center.
There's 254?
254 signalized intersections that we maintain in the city. They're not all plugged into our system. And so our goal is just to get them all plugged into our system.
Okay. So like when I have to sit on Staples Street for a half an hour to get to the red light at Padre Island Drive, that's what you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And some of some of them may be TechDOT, and we can coordinate with TechDOT for the ones that are are not ours, but for the ones that are city intersections, we can modify timing if we need to, make sure that if there's, say, from from summertime to school starts, if something changes in patterns, we can work with our technicians at our TMC and they can make modifications if needed.
Well, I'm thrilled to hear that we're going to do that because I've said since before I came here, it doesn't seem like we have any rhyme or reason about how our traffic signals work in this city. I mean, most cities, if you are going down a boulevard like downtown on Chaparral, if you hit one green, you should be able to go through most of them, and that doesn't work here in most places. And especially with our our big collector streets like, I don't know if collector is the right word, but Staples and Airline and Everhart, it just seems like there's hardly any monitoring of what's going on there from hour to hour and how the traffic flow changes and how those signals should change to support those traffic changes.
Yes, sir.
So my question, I guess, is are the intersections currently controlled by TechDOT or are they controlled by the city of Corpus Christi?
The the ones on city streets are controlled by us. And the ones, I believe, under SPID, for example, some of those are TechDOTs, but we work with them closely if we need to remedy any issues.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Sure. Councilman Suckley.
Yeah, related to Councilman Pusley's question about the signalized intersection, so you mentioned 254?
254 total.
So these numbers here on the on the graph, are those ones that we're going to add in addition to the 254?
No, that's our current, so 220 is what we currently have.
Okay.
And then we're going to increase that to 223. So we're we're some ways away from getting to 254.
Okay, so basically staying stagnant. I mean, you you strive to add more, but we're not going to make that much.
Right, and it usually includes like bond projects. If we have a bond project, then their signals will include with that the infrastructure so that we can tie in to the system. And some of those are existing intersections. So that's where that cost comes from. It comes with a bond project and so we'll we'll piggyback onto that to increase this number. But, you know, it is it is somewhat costly to get it done. And so we we have goals to get it all the way to 254, but right now, this is what we're tracking. Yes, sir.
So regarding that comment, so for example, the expansion of Flower Bluff Drive and that intersection with Yorktown, that's somewhat problematic with the accidents and things that we're addressing now, is, once that expansion comes, will it automatically become a signalized intersection?
That's a Renee question. Renee, you want to come up here? She's our Assistant Director of Traffic.
Okay.
Good morning, Renee Couture. To answer your question, yes, we would try to include it if it's if the budget allows the upgrade from a stop-controlled intersection to a signalized intersection. And I guess just to one point to add to your question about Staples Street, we do have a pilot program running to try and do a coordinated system along Staples, and we are trying to bring some budget items to increase our performance measures on our city streets. So we're expanding the TMC to address some of those concerns that haven't been addressed before.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee. One last question, Ernie, back to the PCI. So let's say we achieve 70 in the next 12, 18 months. Ideally, what would be acceptable for our community eventually? I mean, what's our target? To be 80, to be 90? I mean, of course, we want to be 100, but what's realistic for us to target? What does that look like?
Realistically, I would say, well, to me, my my goal for Public Works honestly is to convert my pothole teams ultimately to resurfacing teams. So right now, we have six crews running around, filling potholes. I really, me personally, we we report the PCI, and it's a great number to have, but my goal is to not have a big pothole crew running around. So my measure of success is putting them out of business, really, and then having more maintenance in-house.
What would be the score of those?
Yeah.
Yeah, so so the score, so compared to the other cities, for example, they're all averaging 68, 69, the seven bigger cities. And so, to give you an idea, 13 centerline miles back in 2017 cost about, let's see, 13 centerline miles cost about $8 million to increase to like two points in condition score. Right, so we're going to see probably up to like 74 at about year three, I would say. And then probably by year five, you know, it's going to stay there because some of the some of the roads that are good are probably going to go down to fair. And so until we're purely preventative maintenance, that number's going to hover around 74, right? Because to get the full system up to 80, you probably have the bond projects that are going to happen that are going to increase it, but then you still have a lot of the arterials that are bad, and that those are going to continue to go down until we go in with our bond project Alameda, for example. And so those will hit the score pretty hard because they're they're wider pavements. So I would say about 74 is what we're going to hover until we get to about a complete Alameda fix, Cimarron fix, you know, Staples, because those arterials are what really hurt the number more than the residuals.
Okay, so ideally, if we could get above 80 at some point in the next 10 years, that would be great for our community.
That would be awesome. Yes, sir.
20 years, probably.
Yeah. I'm not going to be here, Councilman, so I'm going to leave that up to you.
I don't think any of us will. I hope I'm alive.
Okay.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you.
Just repeat that the consultant told us most Texas cities are between 70 and 80.
Right.
Yeah. And, Ernie, before we move on, can you remind us, so the new approach is going to take us from a 60-year plan to roughly, from a 60-year plan to a 12? And then remind us of that number, the the budget that was for, that 60-year budget was near billion?
Oh, yes, yes. It was 980 million down to like 190, I believe, if I remember. 190 million is what the cost was. Yes, sir.
To 190?
Yeah.
And it was 60 to 12 or 15?
60, it would have been 60 years to complete the 400 bad roads of residential streets. And then with this payment-only approach, it's gone down to 12 at the 30 per year.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, so this next slide shows the funding levels over the three years for street maintenance, arterials and collectors, and residential streets. We're shown a decrease proposed for next year due to several projects completed for arterials and collectors and also due to one-time use of closeout bonds funds for our residential streets. And then we're proposing 122 million for fiscal year 2024 with 54 million program towards arterials and collectors, 46 million towards street operations, and 21 million towards residential streets. And the chart provides a visual comparison of funding levels over the past three years. All right, so this chart shows several funding sources for street operations, maintenance, and residential streets, which totals the 122.2, 0.68 million. So beginning with the street maintenance chart on the left, the largest contribution comes from 6% of the general fund revenue, with the street maintenance fees being the next largest contributor, bringing the bringing in approximately 13 million in revenue. And then going to the middle chart, there's 54 million proposed for arterials and collectors next year. Funding sources include go-bond certificates of obligation, type B funds, and a one-time transfer from the general fund. And then the last chart on the right shows the funding sources dedicated towards residential streets, which totals approximately 21 million, with the main source of revenue coming from the 2 plus 2 cents in incremental property tax. The new payment-only approach will come from the street maintenance and residential street fee funds, which are the two outer charts. And this next slide will refer to the chart on the left for street maintenance.
Okay, Mayor, excuse me. Ernie, so back to the mayor's question, the going from the 60-year plan to the to the 12-year, does that include all streets? Is that residential and?
That's that's our residuals.
That's all residential?
Right.
Okay, that's what I understood. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Klein.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. Hi, Ernie. I had a question, I guess, about frame 13, a couple back from where we're at right now. Looking at funding for street maintenance and then our totes collectors and residential streets, it looks as if the funding for residential streets is going down in the next year. Is that correct? From 24 million down to 21 million?
This one? Right, there's a 2.4 million decrease, and that decrease is due to one-time use of closeout bonds for 2023.
We also had a cleanup, CIP cleanup in '23 that we used 4 million to put into residential streets, so that's part of the reason why FY '23 is higher than '24.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to be sure that I thought there was kind of a commitment to kind of focus on residential streets now going forward, want to make sure that we weren't falling back from that.
Right now, that is our priority, the residential streets, yes.
Okay, great. And this is out of the larger budget as well, it's on page 60 toward the front of the budget. I just need clarification on these on these numbers that this is organization number, it's in the toward the top of the page, 60050, transferred to residential streets. That number's dropped, I think, as well. We transferred 18.6 million last year, this current year. We're planning on transferring 13.2 million down to residential streets as well. Again, appears to be a kind of a reduction in attention or focus on on residential streets, and I thought we were moving in the opposite direction, trying to concentrate on repair of residential streets instead. Am I just misunderstanding the budget there perhaps?
Eddie will explain this.
So if you look at the at the bottom there of page 60, down in those one-time expenditures, you'll see the second from the bottom there, the 6.1 million is is in addition to the to the 13 million up there at the top.
Okay.
So it'll be moved into that line item.
What page are you on, Eddie?
Page 60.
60. Page 60. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Eddie, when you add those two, it's 19 point, let's see.
Yes.
It'd be 20 minutes, let's see, 13.2 plus a 6.1.
Right.
So 19.3, which is greater than the 18.6.
Correct.
Okay, so in fact, it's going up.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
All right, so for the 24 proposed budget street maintenance fund, we're proposing 46.88 million budget for the street fund. And within that, 12 million goes to the contractual payment-only work that's funded by the street maintenance fee. The remainder of the budget will be used towards operating costs, which is 30.9 million. This includes traffic division, Public Works Engineering Services, and street operations. And then we're also proposing 19.9 million for the residential street. And then, we're also proposing 19.9 million for the residential street reconstruction fund. 100% of this budget is used towards operating costs that's planned to go to the pavement-only residential contract work. All right. So, I'm going to explain the IMP snapshot in two slides. So, this first slide is going to be the 21 through 23. That's the reconciliation of the original program. And then, the next slide is the reprioritized IMP approach. So, this, this summary here projects remaining to be completed from the old IMP before we perform reprioritization. And so, for the in-house, we have two projects in construction to finish, and then we'll move on to the fiscal year 24 IMP plan, pavement-only streets. For our contractual work or the RSRP work remaining, we have 75 of 139 projects completed, with 54 of those projects left to go for bid, left to go to bid for completion. And our remaining SPMP contractual work, we have 45 projects with 32 of those completed, and we have 13 projects left to finish out the 2023 work. And then, finally, we have six of the 10 concrete projects completed with four left to finish out concrete pavement works in 2023. All right. So, for the 2024, we'll monitor the new IMP as contractual or non-contractual work, with non-contractual work designation representing the Public Works paving crews. So, the 2024 plan for residential streets has a total planned target of the 31 centerline miles or the 160 projects. With the pavement-only approach, all design work was performed by Public Works Engineering in-house, saving that expense, which used to go to consultants when they were doing the old method. The plan for arterial collector streets has a target of eight centerline miles and 11 projects, which also have been designed in-house. And then, we, we have recently completed our pavement-only approach pilot projects. Our in-house team completed 20 streets, which is about four centerline miles, and they completed that in 67 working days. Again, this work began in February 28. And then, here are the results of the, of that work here at the end, when we finished out the program. This is South Saxet Drive. That took the, the in-house team 18 working days to complete. This one is Baker Drive.
Wow.
This took the in-house team 33 days to complete. This one is Summit Drive. It took 21 days to complete. And this one is Claudia Drive. It took 25 days to complete. And this one is Walker Drive, and that one took 14 days to complete.
Wow.
And this, this pilot program, when we first established it, trying to get the metrics for how fast we could do our work, we tried to get the worst of the worst and see what our team could do against those bad streets.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to enhancements. We have six enhancements. The first one is recurring funding for the pavement assessment to obtain a PCI score. The assessment is conducted every three years and is a factor used to plan the IMP. We procured the PCI contract in 2021, and the assessment was performed in '22. We'll procure the next one in 2024, summer of '24, and the PCI assessment will be performed in 2025. On the years, the pavement assessment is not scheduled to be done. We plan to have that funding go, go towards our alleyway improvement program. That's about a 3, $3 million amount that we would like to use to improve alleys. The next enhancement, this year's department experienced four critical traffic signal events due to traffic incidents. The use of contractor services were required to repair the signals, which caused a delay in our response. The department does not currently own a digger derrick, which is a multi-purpose unit used to dig holes, to install poles, transport and support the weight and height of poles used for planning and emergency operations. The department is proposing the outright purchase of a digger derrick next year for enhanced response capabilities. In addition to responding to emergencies, this unit will also be used for routine maintenance for our traffic signal operations. The next enhancement is for the traffic signal mast arm assessment. Public Works maintains 254 signalized intersections, which are comprised of several support systems. The assessment will provide data to determine costs and planning for traffic mast arm repairs and replacements, which will lead to development of a robust maintenance program. The assessment will be conducted every four years. This year, approximately 15,000 AP streetlights were converted to LED lights. In the picture, you can see the difference between the lights. The light on the left is the high-pressure sodium, and the one on the right shows the LED light. The light study will develop a master plan for improvements to illumination, additional lighting locations, aesthetics, and public safety. With pending completion of the ramp reversal project by TechDOT, the final pavement surface on all main lanes and frontage roads, the need to maintain the area, the area between the main lanes and frontage roads needs to be improved. The city plans to partner with TechDOT to increase the level of service of street sweeping, debris removal, detailed landscaping, and palm tree trimming. A plan will be developed to either supplement existing TechDOT contracts or create city contracts to perform the work in-house.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilman.
Hey, Ernie, on that part, on the SBID corridor part, is that also, is there going to be additional trash pickup as a part of that partnership?
Yes, sir. Litter pickup, any kind of palm tree trimming. A lot of that trash, I guess, comes from the businesses in the area. So, TechDOT only has, I want to say, two or three cycles that they have that they go and pick up, you know, litter or something on the main lanes. But it's, it's not a, a cycle that, that we're happy with, you know, as far as what we would like to see.
Okay. Yeah, especially some of those areas around the mall, the airline to Weber area.
Yes, sir.
Some of those valleys, those concrete valleys along there. I mean, you can drive along, there's literally inches of trash there sometimes. So, it'd be great. Thank you.
All right. So, this is our street maintenance fee update and proposal for the future. So, just some background on our street maintenance fee. July of 30, 2013, that's when the fee was adopted by City Council. January 1, 2014, that's when the fee went into effect. The rate has been the same for the past 10 years, and then currently, our fee generates about $12 million per, per year. And so, going into this next slide, I just wanted to give you all this primer. We're going to talk about a trip factor, and that, what a trip factor is, is vehicle trips an establishment generates published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So, that's kind of the primer for the next slide. Okay. So, currently, the street fee with, with caps, and that's caps to the trip factors, and then also the, the fee itself, we have, that currently generates $12 million, with 54% of that revenue coming from the residential customer, which, which accounts, I'm sorry, residential customer accounts due to the caps on the non-residential customers. The street fee with partial caps in fiscal year '25 is estimated to generate 13.4 million. So, if we partially remove the caps, we would, we would generate more money there. And then, in fiscal year '26, we would completely remove the caps, the estimated income would be 14.8 million. Now, if you go up to that table for fiscal year '24, the department proposes not to increase the current street fee rate and remove the sunset provision, and this will allow the annual review and adoption of the street fee rates as deemed necessary. And if you go to 2025, then we, we propose to adjust the trip factors to current trip numbers, partially remove the caps on non-residential customers, and then possibly phase in an increase in fee based on historical inflation, since the construction costs are anticipated to go up. And then, on the column for fiscal year 2026, then we also continue to maintain up-to-date trip factors, but then fully remove the caps for non-residential customers, and then possibly phase in an increase for historical inflation if needed. And so, if you look to those bullets on the left, the, the key indicator there is that from '24 to '26, the residential rate, the, the residential generates 54% revenue, that's going to, that burden is going to be brought down to 41% of that revenue. So, that, that burden will be relieved from the residential customer.
Councilman Pusley.
Okay. And I want to make this comment as somebody who, before I ever got here, I will tell you, this is the most controversial, unpopular thing that this city ever did. I get more negative comments about this. We would be better off burying that 14-point, whatever, million dollars or whatever it is per year in the budget somewhere and removing the street user fee, because it makes everybody mad.
Yes, sir.
Everybody. And I get more negative comments about this, and I can't, and I brought this up, Peter, the other day. You know, we, we'd be better off removing the street user fee and plugging that into our budget somewhere and misogyn those numbers in than we would be doing this. And it's, you know, we, it's just a matter of, of how this was done, and no one likes it.
Yes, sir.
And so, whether I'm here or not, that's going to be the, the story. Thank you.
Yeah. We just had this conversation yesterday regarding what you just said, Peter and I did, or I voiced that. So, I'm going to echo your comments and move on. Any other comments on that? Okay. Ernest, thank you very much for the presentation.
I just got your stormwater.
Councilman Hernan, just you had a?
Yes, I had, I had something here. I know that you're, you're not necessarily fully 100% responsible for the CIP yourself and Engineering Department, but can you tell me how much of the street CIP was completed versus what was planned?
I'd probably have to get that to you. We'd have to get that.
Okay. The reason I asked that is that the street portion of the CIP, the CIP includes the entire aspect of it, the utilities underneath it and everything. So, but when you break it down, of the $101 million that was planned for the CIP last year, 67 was the actual street portion, right?
Yes, sir.
Curbs, sidewalks, street, base, all that kind of stuff. So, you're increasing that to 200, to 223 million in next year's, in this proposed budget, of which 110 million are just the street portion.
Right.
So, I know that you're, you know, engineering does a lot of the contracting work and stuff like that, but you do have somebody on, I mean, in your staff that monitors these things, right?
Yes, sir.
So, what I'm trying to get at here is that I don't know how much of this CIP you're actually going to get to by, and it's practically doubling. So, I want to understand what you think you can accomplish in CIP for next year as it's proposed.
Okay.
How, how much can you do? How much can be done?
No, I don't have that number in front of me. I mean, I'd have to have the Gantt charts for what engineering has planned, and then we can give you that data.
Okay.
And sir, we definitely get your point, but we are confident that we're going to
be able to knock out a larger chunk of, of the CIP, simply based off the fact that when we're talking about the pavement-only approach, it's not only being performed by in-house crews, we actually have spoken with the contractor community, and they also are on board with taking that new approach. So, as Ernest stated, we're basically increasing our centerline miles by five times was being performed under the current approach, and that's going to be reflected in the contractor community.
Okay. I, I, I understand, you know, you, it's well documented, and you brought in a new approach, so I didn't beat you up on the fact that you were behind on, you know, because you're, you're doing, you, you've identified the problem, created a solution, and we're moving forward. I'm, I'm with that on that. What I'm talking about is the CIP. Now, because it doesn't just affect you, because there's utilities underneath that, okay? There's utility work that, that goes along with that, that we're budgeting for with regards to our rates for that. So, if, if these things can't be accomplished within the timeframe they're done, we're projecting, our rates are done for a two-year period, and so, you not only project what your capital outlay is, but also what your projected debt service would be for the following year. So, if you can't get to them, your rates are based on a false assumption. Now, historically, you know, I, I look back at some of our previous CIPs, the CIPs, you know, in totality was, you know, 200 million, 250 million, somewhere in those ranges. Now, we're getting to 700 million, 220 million being streets, half of it being utilities. Well, if you don't get to those projects in this year, and you're basing your rates on those projects, you, you see where I'm going with that? That's why I'm asking, can we get to the full 223 million of what we planned in this year? Is that feasible? Because historically, we've gotten 50%. This year was a banner year. We got two-thirds. But if we're planning for, for this amount, and we have historically not been able to do it, can we do it?
And that's a fair question, sir. Let us, the Public Works Department, Engineering Department, we can sit down and actually put together some projections and some numbers, and we can get that answer for you.
Yeah. But I'm going to answer it here, Councilman. So, the answer is based, we've been working on the budget for three months. So, this is the assessment that, that we're saying today, is we think we can get to this. Getting to it, though, doesn't mean every dollar's spent. And so, when we bring contracts to council to award $30 million to a contractor like we're doing on Everhart, we need the 30 million planned. It's not going to get all spent in, in that exact 12 months. So, depending on when we get the, the contracts to council, there could be a slight delay. But based on the staff's best projections today, and you mentioned it, we're doing better from 50%, 70% this year. They're thinking, especially with the pavement-only approach, they're going to be closer to this number than not. So, this is it. There's no, we don't have to go back and do anything. This is what the team is thinking, that we can produce this much. Will we spend exactly every dollar? No, because some of the contracts will, will be let, and some of the monies will be spent in the closeout in the following fiscal year, that type of thing. We're mindful of what you said.
So, so what I, what I'd like to have seen is how many projects we did this year were, were scheduled.
Right.
How many were completed, how many were actual money spent, and how much were, how many of those projects absolutely no money or money was encumbered for? So, where no, nothing was done on that particular project that was budgeted.
Right.
So, I, I want to understand that, because it's a significant increase, and we're going to be basing our rates under that, and, and you're proposing a significant increase in our rates. It's got to be realistic. These things, to me, a realistic budget for capital improvement should be within 10%, okay? I'll, I'll give you that. That's, you know, things happen. Contractors, you get no bids on, on, when you go out to bid, right? So, sometimes things happen. But if we're missing it by 50, 25%,
Right.
30%, it's, it's, it's not, it's not a good budget.
Right. We agree.
Okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Roy.
Ernie, I just wanted to thank you. It was, I, I felt that was a good presentation in terms of giving me an idea of, do you know your business model? Does your staff, I mean, you guys know what you're doing in terms of where you, where you're at and where I think you want to go. And so, I, I like the flow of the presentation. And at the end, it actually, I think, at least it felt for me, I think there's some things that, like Councilman Pusley was talking about, that we have some hurdles. But I think, based on the information that you gave us, we have some options that we might be able to do something different in the future to make our constituents happy, and then, and, and get the things that you need to be able to do your job. And, and that's all I can ask for. So, it was excellent presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. I think that's all.
Okay.
He's going to do the stormwater next.
Okay.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
You liked him so much, he's right back there.
Yeah.
Encore.
Okay.
All right. So, our stormwater mission statement is protect life and property through proper stormwater conveyance while protecting water quality in our creeks, rivers, bays, river bays, and estuaries. This is just some additional pictures of the services that our stormwater team provides. And then, our assets, we have a little over 450 miles of stormwater ditches and channels, 680 linear miles of underground stormwater pipe that we maintain, and over 19,000 stormwater inlets that have to be clean on a pretty consistent basis. Same work chart as before, but this one, we're going to focus more to the right. So, the stormwater section under Gabriel on the right has 117 FTEs. And then, if you look at public information next to my name, that's one FTE. And then, under support services, four of those positions are paid out of the stormwater budget. And so, our total stormwater positions is 122. All right. So, our, our first achievement for fiscal year 2023 was the initiation of All right, so our first achievement for fiscal year 2023 was the initiation of our Bridge IMP, which will, which will be prioritizing bridge maintenance based on inspection reports from Tech dot and our city consultant starting in fiscal year 24. So for, for your information, thirty-six of those bridges are Tech dot inspected bridges, which have a span length over 20 feet. That's considered bridge class. And then anything less than 20 feet, sixty-eight of those bridges are city inspected. The second achievement is the city was able to partner with Tech dot to set in motion the process to replace those two bridges, which are the Ocean Drive and the Yorktown Bridges, which that Yorktown Bridge will tie into the future Yorktown Project. The third achievement is with six in-house street sweepers. To date, we have been able to remove eighteen hundred tons of debris from our roadways to not only create a more aesthetic view for our public, but also protect the environment and the impacts of this debris removal on our bays, creeks and estuaries. And then our last achievement, we began the bay water quality pilot program with the goal to install the first nine trash interceptors along the bayfront. The dual, the dual screen interceptor, which is pictured there, are now functioning in two large box culverts at the Louisiana Parkway system. And we go to the performance measures for stormwater. Currently, we're trending in the right direction with our level of service in our street sweeping program as we plan the two years. So that one is going from nineteen thousand to about twenty-four thousand, and that's linear miles. We continue to provide vegetation maintenance 20 times a year in the rightways, ditches and easements. And that is showing a target of twenty-eight thousand acres down, up from 23. And then we continue to increase our efficiency to maintain our major channels that funnel water to our major bodies, or funnel water to our major bodies of water. And then that one is, is showing from 23 to 45. And then some modifications to operational staff. We are now able to complete more inspections with our environmental team. And so those inspections are going up from thirteen hundred to the 2,450 target in 2024.
Ernie, do we have our floatables capture system in place yet?
The what now? Sorry?
Our floatables, the capture system?
Yes, sir. The, the one in the picture? Is that the one you're talking about?
Um, yes.
Well, I know we've been talking about putting them in place, but I.
Yes, and that's what he's talking about. We've been, we've just been, we've postponed the ribbon cutting, I guess, of these because it's such, it's so important. But those are them, Councilman Pusley. And I know Councilwoman Campus is also eagerly awaiting, but those are them.
On slide 35, Councilman, achievement number four. Ernie, we'll go over that again, Ernie.
Yes, sir. So the bay water quality pilot program, our plan is to install nine trash interceptors and the first of the nine one is installed and that's the one that's on Louisiana Parkway.
So we have one installed?
One installed, yes, sir.
Okay, well, that was, that was my point is, you know, we've been talking about this forever and I've been asking about this since before Councilman Campus came to the council about, you know, we get banged every year because of all these floatables out here in the bay. And it just seems to me it would be a simple thing for us to go down there and get that done and get it behind us. And I don't know why we, we can't make that a priority. We should.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll make it a priority.
You talk about environmental sustainability.
It's a priority, Councilman.
There's one.
Right, it's a, it's a priority. The local contractor, since it's new and it's a lot of design to fit the specific box culvert, this, this is not the shelf stuff. It's not off-the-shelf stuff, so. But the first, you can see the picture on 35, that's the one, two of these are in.
It's, it's two boxes, one location.
Right, one location, two boxes. What's the name of the contractor again that's doing the work?
JM Davidson.
Right, JM Davidson, a local contractor who built Copark Pier is doing this for us.
Yeah, but I, I think it is a priority and it is, it is moving forward. There was, it was in design because I think it was Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, wasn't it? Who were, they were, they were bringing up, or I'm sorry, giving options on what the best design is of these. I mean, it was, it was a process, my point is. And it is here. I know we've kind of put off a couple of times, you know, being able to go celebrate the fact because it is a very big deal. We get a lot of people who, you know, care much about all of this going into the bay, but it's there and it's moving forward and we just need to make an announcement about it.
Yes, ma'am. I'll make it a priority, sir.
Yeah, and I've, I've said this like eighty-seven times from this dais. We don't talk about the things that we do well enough. And this is, this is something we're, we're doing, we need to talk about. The street sweeping deal, the tons of garbage that we have picked up off our streets with those street sweepers, we need to tell people about that. It's important because if that stuff's not being picked up off our street, guess where it ends up? So it ends up in our drainage systems, which many times ends up in our base system. So it's extremely important that we bring that in. It's extremely important we push that forward. And at the same time, I want to be sure that when we put these things in place, when we have a major rain event, if that ever happens again in my lifetime, that, that these don't become an impediment to our drainage system being able to take stormwater out of the city and where it needs to go.
Yes, sir.
So there's going to have to be some monitoring taking place when we have those kind of events.
I agree, sir.
Okay.
And may I just add?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. May I just add that I think one of the other placements that you're looking into is Lutcher Park, right? Okay, because that is one of the, you know, one of the places that I know that Councilman Roy and I are aware of, that they're asking, that have been asking, do we know at any point when that may be?
We can get you that information, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So for the 2024 proposed budget, we're proposing 29.1 million for the Storm Water Fund. The majority of the budget is used towards operating costs and then a personnel coming in close second at 27% of our budget. And if we look at our fiscal year 23 to 27, five-year enhancement forecast, you see last year's enhancements included, and this is for, for 23, last year's enhancements included adding equipment and FTEs for two inlet maintenance teams in which all positions have been hired and equipment has been ordered. This was created to maintain the over nineteen thousand inlets that we currently have in our inventory. We also included some emergency repair funds into, into organization that have been useful for such projects as the Oso Parkway Golf Court Crossing, Golf Cart Crossing, in which all materials have been purchased. And currently, we're waiting for the completion of a CIP project so that we can begin and continue that work. Another project that was completed was the Amistad Bridge Culvert Replacement, which had similar issues as the Oso Project with old corrugated pipe. And that was used as, that they used those corrugated pipe as culverts. So this project will improve that. And then, and then finally, staff professional training was completed to include trench safety, confined space training, and then also traffic control training. For fiscal year 24, we plan to purchase two more street sweepers and add five FTEs to operate our fleet. Currently, we have augmented staff to run sweepers from other stormwater services. But to remind everyone, this program did not exist in 22. And to date, again, we've removed quite a bit of debris. Also this year, we plan to enhance a non-existent program of our minor roadside ditches, which we have over 300 miles of them. And so next year, we'll add an additional crew to add the service. So currently, we're pretty reactive to those requests. And then our final enhancement will be pump station improvements to our downtown stations. And then in subsequent years, we're going to use those monies to establish an herbicide program for our rightaway as well. Our service enhancements for 22 through 27, with the enhancements proposed on the previous slide, these are the target service enhancements in each of the categories. So with nineteen thousand inlets to service our, to service, our goal is to inspect and service each inlet a little over twice, a little over once a year. We will continue to hold our vegetation at 20 times a year cycles for the 2,400 acres that we maintain, which is two times a month in the eight-month wet season and one time per month in the four dryer months. Street sweeping will continue its transition to city forces only program with the proposed enhancements. We have come a long way in developing this program that didn't exist before and the plan is to ultimately sweep our residential streets four times a year and our collectors and arterials 12 times a year. And this coming fiscal year will begin a minor channel maintenance program, which currently is on an as-requested basis. And this will help begin our ultimate service goal of maintaining over 200 miles of roadside ditches every three years. The major channel maintenance was our first enhancement when the stormwater fee was established and will continue our service level goal of a two-year cycle for maintenance. And then our final enhancement is to begin inventorying our close to 700 miles of underground seven. And then the non-residential rate is 884 per ERU. And this year's 884 is less than what we projected before. The original rate projected was nine dollars and one cent and that we presented to council. So this amount is less.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to that rate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is also kind of going to tie into, back to your capital program for stormwater. In the budget, you, in the approved budget, you had $29 million for the stormwater only projects and then an additional 42 million for the ones that are tied to street projects. For a total of 71 and a half million. I'm pretty sure it's a little more. I think we modified it for the mud bridge because we spent more there, correct? How much, how many of those projects have, were completed versus ones that aren't completed?
Right, I don't have that information.
For stormwater?
Right.
Okay, you're increasing your stormwater CIP to 40 million for stormwater projects, but there's less for street utility projects, so it's a little bit less overall, 65 million. Again, these are, you're basing your, your rates models on some of these projects being completed and the debt service associated with it. I need to have an accurate understanding of what you can actually accomplish with these projects. So I'll ask for those as well along with the street projects.
With the street, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman, we'll get you that. And just to highlight, there's two real significant ones in the fiscal year 2024 budget, including 14, close to 14 million for La Voya Creek that's been in the planning and design stages. And then also North Beach Drainage, 12 million. Those are two big drivers that bring that number up, just to highlight those. But we'll get you that detail you asked for. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, one other question.
Yes.
I apologize. Part of our drainage system includes a lot of the retention ponds that have been built in these communities as well as our own, we have one in our own park. I think it's Lakeview Park off of Holly that we have a retention pond there that, or we call it a lake, but it's, it acts, it's a retention pond, right? That we, it's part of our drainage system. But there is, there's really no, little to no maintenance associated with those, but yet we continue to allow developers to build these retention ponds without any kind of plan for maintenance. Since, I mean, it doesn't matter whether it's a private retention pond or ours, it's still part linked to part of our drainage system. If, if there's a flooding event where those things fail or it doesn't work as it's as appropriate, we're still going to get blamed for it. So kind of give me your ideas to what your thoughts are on that.
So to, to that, I, I did know that, that they weren't being maintained as part of our program, but I mean, there's.
Let's have Gabriel. I'm not sure if we make, do we own any of those, Gabriel?
No, sir.
Right, we don't own any of them.
Gabriel, no, so.
Well, we do, we do own the one at Lakeview Park.
Yes, sir. So with that one, it hasn't become a public issue. That one that drains into Lakeview, the actual outfall's almost like a, you know, a weir system. So it, it's doing its job properly right now. As per, you know, the private, they're under HOA. So HOAs are responsible for those issues. We can have code enforcement. You know, if we do see a public safety issue, code enforcement can get involved and get involved with those HOAs. But if there's a serious public, you know, safety issue during, you know, a major hurricane or a major storm event, then the city, you know, we can go in there as part of public safety. But the day-to-day operation of those are the responsibilities of those homeowner associations.
Yeah, and Councilman, you do, Councilman.
Let me just say, homeowner associations have no money. I don't know where, and I'm not, I'm laughing at it because I'm part one that has these things and they just, there's just not, and there's no money for these to do the kind of work that's needed, right? And, you know, the developers wash their hands of it. You know, they say, oh, we're going to do this to address the drainage and we'll throw it over to the HOA and the HOA does assessments and lucky they, they can collect sometimes. And then they have to do, you know, they have to contract out for dredging. These things, you know, have silt over time and it's a part of our drainage system, right? The street drains directly into these retention ponds. Okay, so I understand that, yeah, the HOA is technically responsible, but they're not capable of managing those systems. So I, I look at it from the perspective of macro view of can, you know, we have the same situation over at King's Crossing where they have private ditches that are part, even the whole, half of that golf course is part of the drainage system, right? So these are kind of things that have kind of been built in place, but realistically, long-term, don't have a real plan around them or. So I, I think we need to relook at this and see how we can make sure we're not setting ourselves up for failure.
Yeah, good, real good point, Councilman, because the, as we work on the impact fees, the drainage master plan that was developed has a lot of these retention ponds, especially on the fast emerging south side area where there's no topography. So you need, you need an in-place drainage system.
All those acres, half acres like Kitty Hawk, Lago Vista, they have these huge retention areas that, you know.
More are coming. I just saw some new ones.
More that are coming.
So the issue is we have no money and no staff budgeted or assigned to that.
And there's no long-term plan. And then the developer disappears 20 years later and here we are with, you know.
Right. It's a good policy question because ultimately, it's going to take financial resources to do it, whether we do it or the private sector does it with our money, with the taxpayer money. So it's, right now, we have no program for it. We just want to be mindful of it.
I asked this question and to Richard back when, when he was here and he referred to a San Antonio program where they do have some dredging aspects of that just to make sure that they're, you know, enough, they, they hold enough, enough water.
Right.
But I want to make sure that we're, we're looking at this from a holistic sense to make sure we're not setting ourselves up for failure.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Pusley?
Yeah, it's a good point because I think on a really, really good year, HOAs collect maybe 40% of the money from households in any given HOA. So we need to make sure that when developers create retention ponds that are part of the drainage system that's going to impact the cities, that there's enough, as Councilman Hernandez brought, says, enough money to make sure that those are going to be taken care of. And we need to probably relook at that and how it's done. My question relates to, Ernie, with respect to the Storm Water Fund, this, for fiscal year 2024, you're showing 29.15 million, right? And what, when we created this new billing mechanism for stormwater, where we, you know, used to, people paid stormwater rate based on how much water they used in their house and now it's based on impermeable area of their respective property, how much has that budget changed from when we did it originally to now? Or how much is the revenue, I guess is the better term?
So the revenue projections are always based on what we need to run our program. And to answer, you know, Councilman Hernandez's question earlier also, so we base the rate based on, you know, actuals. So, so we get the bond payment or our debt service payment that we have for this coming year. So we're not. So we're not projecting what our bond payment is based on those capital programs. So this rate is actually established on what we have to pay out on our debt service. So every year with, with the raising rate like, like last year, we projected to capture like the 22.97 million. I believe we're on target to capture that. The first year was to capture the 18 million. We were on target to capture that 18 million with those rates. This year, we're going to use some of our fund balance. So these rates are actually only going to capture about 26.5 million dollars of worth of revenue and the, the delta of that will come from our fund balance to make up, to get to that 29.15.
Okay, well, my question is, and I appreciate that, that's very clear, what, how different would it have been if we would have stayed with the old stormwater rate system? Would we still capture the same revenue?
You would have to either adjust your water rates to capture these enhancements that we've, that we've had. So we've had our major channel enhancement, our, our inlet enhancements, our street sweeping enhancements. So you would have to have adjusted water rates and then, of course, your, your debt service. So you would have to adjust on the water side in order to capture for these increases in expenses.
Okay, well, I'm trying to compare apples to apples here. So we now are assessing a fee to homeowners and commercial owners under this new stormwater rate system.
Correct.
How different was that under the old system? And you, and when you talk about you're going to capture the money to cover your bonded indebtedness and all the other stuff, would you have captured that same amount of money under the old system?
No, sir.
Okay. How much would you have been short and how, how were you making that up before?
Because the old system was capturing about 30 million. 15 was going towards the operations and 15 was going towards debt service. So stormwater and the previous water consumption rate was generating 30 million dollars, but half of that was going to debt service and then 15 million was just going to operations based on the, on the old water rate.
Okay. Because we, and the reason I'm asking these questions, Peter, is we sold this to our taxpaying public under the auspices of by converting to this system, many of them were, were either going to see no change or maybe less outflow of their money to support this system. And I don't know if that's true or not.
That's, so that statement was accurate for the typical residential customer for the first year?
I really, yeah, I really, yeah.
For the first year. We also told them, the next sentence was that to get to a level of stormwater, if we wanted one for this community, it would be a gradual rate increase for four years in a row, five years in total. And that's what, that's, so that's why today the revenue is 26 million and the programs that Ernesto went over, that's what we can do today that we didn't do before.
When we implemented this, we, we told them that we were going to, along with the, the new process, we were going to raise their rate every year for four years.
Yes, we did, Councilman. Yes, sir. That's how we talked to the community. We had community meetings on it. We had a citizen advisory panel. Last year, we talked about it.
Yeah, I went to those. We'd have like four people show up.
I know, it's tough to get people out, but the point is we tried numerous ways to educate the community. This is a incremental program to where we, if the council wants to still get there, where we want to get to. And some small things to, to explain is like street sweeping. We want sweeping any, sweep any streets.
I understand.
Flooding, a lot of flooding is caused because the, the ditches aren't maintained, the inlets aren't maintained or hadn't been maintained. So it's a gradual, this is instead of saying with a big rate shock that we need to have this rate, we're doing it slowly over five years. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, all I can tell you is that the public that didn't show up to those meetings now is paying attention and all they see is a rate increase.
Well, last night we were at City Council District Two, several commented on the street sweeping, that they, they appreciated that. They appreciated the improved water quality in the bay. That's what, some of the comments, we had about 30 people there last night.
Yeah, 30 people is not a resident, that's not a representative.
I'm just saying what the commenter said last night.
That's a fingernail compared to the number of people that we're trying to reach out, Peter.
I'm just telling you what they said last night. Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to warn you.
I know. Yes, sir.
Councilman Sackley?
Thanks, Mayor. To Councilman Hernandez's point, I think it's a good point with respect to the HOAs and some of those ponds and runoffs and things, but I do bank a lot of the HOAs in town. I have a lot of clients and, you know, the well-run with, with strong boards and that people understand the responsibilities of being an owner and the impact of, of part of that, being part of that association is being responsible to pay your assessments and a lot of the better boards have, you know, capex for the next five years, schedules, projections of what, you know, what, what requirements are needed for the common areas, including streets and other infrastructure. And so I just think we need to be really careful about shifting that burden over to the city now to maintain some of those things because it is a slippery slope. And some of those HOAs already do plan for that and budget for it and assess for it. And so I just think we need to see both ends of the spectrum there. So, thanks.
Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor.
You turn on your.
I can tell you the maintenance isn't, it's on.
It's on.
Oh, we couldn't hear you.
The maintenance for it doesn't really happen. I'm, I'm just, and if, but they don't know what they don't know.
Yeah, but if they, if they buy into a community like that for the amenities and other things, they need to be responsible for maintaining the infrastructure and amenities.
How do they know? They're not drainage experts.
You become, you become a knowledgeable home buyer when you buy into a community like that.
So I, I just want to say that I, I understand the, the aspect of what you're saying, it's just the reality isn't there. I can tell you, there's never been any dredging on any of those lakes or retention ponds, none, ever. And then when you have a situation like King's Crossing, there's nothing happening there either, right? Heck, they have, they don't even have the airator turned on to where it's, it's, okay, I'll, 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 whatever the point. The problem exists. We need to figure out whether it's enforcement, if it's, you know, recommendations, if it's something that we can partner up with them. It's got to be something because I don't want a disaster to happen. That's, that's the, that's the bottom line. The, and shoot, I lost my train of thought on the question I was going to ask. I'll come back to it. Give me a second.
Okay. Councilmember Roy?
Don't remember which council member said this, but earlier we were talking about kind of tooting your own horn. And I will tell you that when you guys started enhancing the cleaning out of the, you know, the waterways and that, and County Island and a couple of other areas in my district, I've actually seen it. It's unbelievable, the number of people that stopped me and praised that. I, I just, again, I want, I wish that we had a way that you would be able to make sure that people know what you guys are doing. The street sweeping, all the things that you guys are doing are, are stellar. And we just got to make sure that the public, because unfortunately, when we do have these town halls, we get about 30 people and the weird part about it is, it's the same 30 people that are District One show up at District Two that go over to District Three. So I'm not even, I say that, probably half of them. So I'm not even sure if, if we get a full bouquet of, of, you know, different people. But anyway, just keep that in mind because that's important. It actually, we had a real big problem right off of 624 and it shut that problem down where I was getting phone calls all the time right there. Now there's a development that's getting ready to put two commercial pads across from the school, but it hasn't flooded now. We haven't had rain in a while. But anyway, just keep up the work on that and make sure people know what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hernandez, is that your light again?
Yes.
Apologize to remember what I was going to say. You're, you're paying a portion out of your fund balance to cover the gap between the 26 million and the 29 million in projected expenditures. And you're considered an enterprise fund, correct?
It's a special revenue fund. Is it a special revenue fund?
Is it a special revenue fund or is it an enterprise fund?
Enterprise.
Okay, so according to our budget policy, enterprise funds have to maintain a 25% fund balance, right? So if you're dropping your fund balance down to 4,800, 880,000, you're, you're kind of at 16, 17% of your fund balance requirement.
There was 13 million in fund balance projected.
Well, your, your beginning balances, according to the budget, is, is just shy of 13 million, right?
12, 9, and then we draw it down to 10, 5. Four, and the four, 4.9 million is needed for the 25%.
What page is that?
Okay, so it's the 10 million, not the 4 million. The 4 million is reserved for the commitments.
That's correct. 4 million is a 25%. The 4, 9, 4.9 million.
Eddie, what page is that?
132. 132.
Okay, so you're meeting your 25%. Because last, last year you ended up with a fund balance, well, your amended balance was much higher. I think it was somewhere in the 33% range, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the questions.
Okay, great. So thank you, Ernesto. Our next department, is that it?
I had a couple more stuff.
Oh, you do? Okay, it's all right.
No worries. Just to, to continue on with the enhancements proposed in the previous slide, the first one is the stormwater street sweeping crew and equipment. So that enhancement is 508,000. The next one is the, the minor channel enhancement service to target approximately the 300 miles of roadside ditches, adding nine positions and that gets our maintenance cycle of six, of six years. That's a 2.2 million. And then the pump station improvements at 250,000. Those are for the two stations to improve pump housing, overall pumps, over all of our pumps on Power Street and upgrade of our PLC computer system at the Kenny Street location. And then the last one is the debt, debt service funding for the stormwater infrastructure at 1.7 million. And that closes out the stormwater budget presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Ernesto and your team, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We have David Leifeld now, our Director of Solid Waste Services, that'll present his budget.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. David Leifeld, Director of Solid Waste Services. This morning, I'm here to present our budget. Our mission statement is very simple. It is to collect, dispose and recycle solid waste in an environmentally responsible manner and to ensure public health and beautification of the city. And as our picture shows, I think we're doing an excellent job. Solid Waste Services entails a lot. We provide residential and commercial accounts for 97,000 customers. That's both trash and recycling. We have 170,000, approximately more or less. Customers use the transfer station annually. It is becoming more and more popular. And this last year, we were recycling 12,000 tons of recyclables. Some of the additional services we provide to the residents, we've got weekly curbside refuse and bi-weekly recycling, the use of the J.C. Elliott transfer station six days a week. We currently provide four brush and two of those include bulky items, collections annually for every resident within the city. We're currently providing 12 litter-critter events, one month, one weekend out of every month for 12 a year. And daily household hazardous waste services, which is very important for our customers when they're cleaning out sheds or whatever and encounter some, maybe something Grandpa Smith left behind. So they have the ability to dispose of household hazardous waste in a very environmentally efficient manner. Our organization includes 192 employees. We're divided under two assistant directors. Paul Bass is over our administration and collections operation and Philip Aldrich is over our disposal and compliance division, so. I do want to brag on the department a little bit. We've got several achievements highlighted. As we've talked before, we have a landfill gas to energy project, which is designed to take the, the waste gas that the landfill generates, which is currently a pollution, a pollution, a pollutant hazard that we have to collect and flare. And we spend considerable amount of money annually doing that. We have our energy project under construction. It's scheduled to be completed by October. They plan to be producing gas and selling it by January. And so instead of spending money to maintain a system to burn the gas and just flare it, we've got a company that's taking over maintenance and operations of our system. They're maintaining it, they're expanding it, they're collecting the gas and then they're going to pay us a royalty payment on top of that. So not only have we reduced our operational expenses, but we've increased our revenue. We're anticipating half a million dollars annually in the first year. That's variable based on a lot of factors, the amount of gas that is produced as well as the gas rates out there at the time. But we're very excited about that. By January of next year, we should be having a ribbon cutting and be able to show this off to the public.
Awesome. Very good.
We're, we're very excited about that.
Yeah, you should be. Congratulations.
Thank you. We, well, not the oil and gas, just, just the gas business. Yeah. The, the good thing about this is, this is a renewable natural gas. It's not natural gas pumped out of the ground, but it's a waste product. So it's, it's really cool. Several years ago, we came to you with a program to put out our, our recycling education personnel and we managed to reduce our recycling contamination by an additional 6.2% this year. That brings our total reduction down to 29.13%. So we've taken our contamination from about 43% down to 29 and a half percent. That's a phenomenal reduction in just two years. And once again, we're very proud of that. The, the community has been very helpful with that and have been doing a lot to help us in that direction. Achievement number three is our compost facility. We have submitted our permit mod to the state. They came back with eight notices of deficiency of such great magnitude as they didn't like the colors that we used on our maps, the placement of some of the issues, the page numbering system. So a very, very minor issues that they had with our permit mod. We're in the process of cleaning that up. We'll submit that within the next couple of weeks and should have our permit modification approved by, by September, end of September easily. Once we get that completed, we will move into the construction phase and we hope to have that moving forward very quickly. The last one is that we, with your help, provide, created a brand-new program to have our own in-house training program for CDL drivers. We've currently been partnering with Delmar to make that happen. We have graduated our first seven CDL apprentices. They are currently driving trucks. This has been a phenomenal help to us in getting our CDL vacancy rate down. Last year, this time, we had 22 CDL vacancies. Currently, we're down to 12. And so that's a phenomenal reduction. Another one of our enhancements that has proven very valuable.
Hey, Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes, Councilman Sackley.
Thanks, David. On the recycling contamination, can you quantify for us what the impact of reducing that percentage does in terms of, is it cost savings with the recycling entity that does that for us because there's less contamination?
Yes, sir. We, we pay a per-ton fee to our processing company. So if we have 14,000 tons that we collect and 4,000 of that is contamination, we're paying a very high disposal cost. It's not really disposal. They have to process it, they have to pull it out and then we put it in the landfill anyhow. So we anticipate that that 40% contamination rate was costing us half a million dollars a year. So by reducing that contamination rate, we will be paying less money to process trash through our recycling facility.
We're, my family's active recyclers and I haven't gotten a new recycling bin in a while, so maybe the new ones have it on there, but do the new recycling bins that we're handing out, do they have any sort of decal or anything on the recycling bin that says not allowed or allowed?
Yes, they do.
Okay. That would be helpful.
And when we come, when our recycling education folks come across the container that doesn't have those, they're supposed to add one to it. We have the decals to add to the top of them.
Okay, that's, that's a big help because like I said, we're active and my daughter's probably a little more active in throwing stuff in there that shouldn't go in there, so I'm half the time digging stuff out. But anyways, that's a side note.
Right, all the new containers come with that decal on them and it's pictorial as well as explicit and helps that. And one other thing I want to brag about that we're looking into, it's not implemented yet, but a while back, we had some comments about the lids blowing open on the, on the recycle cans. I currently. I currently, we have located a modification to the cans that allows us to put a latching lid on it. We have actually got one as a sample, and we will be buying probably two-hundred of them and putting those out in the community for evaluation to see how the people like it.
That's what I was just, that was my, so, next point was, this comes up every Friday. Our trash day is Friday, and especially so on the recycle weeks, is the whole side of Yorktown where I live, the, the lids face towards the southeast, which is the prevailing southeast breeze. So if my lid doesn't blow open before the trash can comes and blow stuff out onto the street, when they come and they dump the trash, when they're picking it up, it catches the lid. So every Friday when I come home, I can expect to walk my storm sewer ditch and pick up trash that's flown out of my trash can every week, literally, so.
And, and, and we are piloting this. It's a, a really cool lid. It has a very simple latch for the customer to use, but when, and, and you don't have to lock it or unlock it. It just, it latches in place, and then it's latched in place, and when the truck picks that up, it uses a gravity cam lock inside, which releases that lock so that the driver doesn't have to unlock anything. He doesn't have to touch anything. It doesn't change our operations any. It's, it's really slick, and so you can dump it, and then it puts it back down. When it puts it back down, the latch doesn't always latch, but that's okay because it's already empty. And so, uh, it, it, it does have a little more of a hassle, uh, because you, it takes two, two hands to open the lid instead of just one. So you have to put your recyclables down, open the lid, and then dump them in there.
That's okay. Dan will do it.
Thanks for doing that. Uh, that, that'll make an impact in the amount of trash blowing around in our community, I can assure you of that. And hopefully, it helps keep the raccoons out, too. Because we literally have, I came home the other day, we had a, a family of five raccoons fighting over trying to get in our trash lid.
Right.
Councilman, Yorktown Road is available for adoption to pick up trash all along that road.
Well, we, we are currently just piloting for the recycle bins because there's a, a, an extra cost to it. It's about a twenty dollars per cart charge. And so there, it is, it's twenty dollars a cart. It's not expensive compared to the amount of litter that it, it could protect us.
Right.
Uh, but the blowing trash out of the trash cans, if people use trash bags, that would help with that, too.
Right. Uh, Count, one, one more comment, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. I just wanted to, um, mention bottles. Are we doing anything with the, did you mention before about recycling bottles? Have we looked into that program?
That, that, that's an excellent question, and yes, we have, we constantly look into that program. Our current recycling contractor's facility is not able to handle glass bottles. And they are the only one in the neighborhood at this point, so we're, we're kind of limited there. But what we are wanting to do, as you know, we're in the process of designing a new transfer station. When we get that designed and built, we are going to put in a glass crusher. And this will allow us to process and recycle the glass locally. Uh, glass is very difficult to recycle. It's very expensive to recycle, and it causes a lot of problems in the traditional recycling program. And that's why our, our contractor really isn't interested in it. But when we get a glass crusher, we will be able to run the glass bottles through it. It creates a very nice sand substitute, and anywhere that we currently use sand, whether it's in construction projects, utility projects, roadway projects, uh, wherever it is, we will be able to use that sand as a substitute. So we've got it on the horizon.
Okay.
We are currently collecting glass and stockpiling it. Uh, we don't currently recycle it. Some people think we do, but we're, we're currently just, uh, stockpiling it till we can get our glass crusher in place.
Okay.
And it's just merely a, a factor of needing a place to put it that's out of the weather, because the weather eats these machines up tremendously.
And I am grateful for the, um, mention of the, the pilot program for the closing of the lids, because it's, it is a very, you know, a high problem for all of our neighbors. I mean, our, all, all the lids are up and flying, um, debris everywhere, so thank you for that. Um, I also just, uh, wanted to just say thank you again for, um, for the landfill gas, I mean, the, um, the new, uh, construction that is going to be underway for the, the new landfill. Uh, I'm just grateful for, for these achievements and, you know, great job. Keep doing it.
Well, thank you. Uh, the, these two enhancements that we have, both the composting and the, uh, gas-to-energy, are both, uh, revenue beneficial to us. Either they cost less than landfilling, or they generate revenue, and they're both great for the environment.
What about the rain barrels? How do we do with those? Did we?
The, the rain barrels are operated through the utility department. I have no information on that.
It's through our water department. We, uh, we're so, we sold out for this year, so next year, they're going to order more.
Okay.
Yes, there's a small fee to acquire those, but they're real popular.
Okay.
And just to piggyback real quick on the glass, so individuals can take their glass bottles to our, uh, our transfer station.
Right.
Uh, we don't pick them up, but they can take them there themselves, and as David said, they're stockpiling them. But, so if anybody I know the island had, uh, has somebody that picks them up for residents, and an individual takes them, but...
Good to mention.
Right, an individual, a customer, can take them to the transfer station on, what's his street?
It's at On, Crosstown.
Crosstown, right, our transfer station, then we'll, we'll collect them from that, from that point.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Hey, David, are those latches going to be primarily on the recycle to start with?
Yes, be, and the primary reason for that is because the recycle, we don't want bagged.
Exactly.
So everything in the recycle is loose. Trash needs to be bagged, and the, if you bag your trash, that reduces the blowing trash tremendously.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, our Solid Waste Service proposed budget of thirty-five-point-seven million dollars. We are totally funded out of the general fund. Uh, you can see that our actuals, we've got, uh, twenty-twenty-two fund numbers, twenty-seven-point-nine. We're going up to the proposed thirty-five-point-seven this year at one-point-seven million variance. The way this breaks down within our budget, uh, personnel is twelve-point, there's thirty-six percent allocations. Uh, that's basically what we pay fleet maintenance and some of the other departments, uh, for their services. And then our operating budget is fifty-one percent. And so the operating budget is, uh, things like fuel, trucks, et cetera. We are proposing a solid waste fee increase. We have, uh, we had a study done by a consultant several years ago. We have not implemented the residential portion of that, uh, study since. And so it's a four-point-three percent residential customer. It's about one and a dollar and fifteen cents a month per customer. The last time we increased our rates was in twenty-nineteen. Uh, our residential collection currently, we charge twenty-six-seventy per month. The proposed is twenty-seven-point-eight-five, and that's the four-point-three percent. The commercial collection goes up a tad more. And then the transfer station, they recommended a ten percent, and at the landfill, a five percent. And that's trying to catch those up. To compare our rates with the other cities in the state, we put together a chart. We fall pretty much dead center. I did have a call from, uh, San Antonio. They're interested in our rate. We've got theirs listed at thirty dollars here. They're raising their rate to thirty-three dollars. And the last email I had with their director was, "How do you keep your rate so low?" Uh, they're wondering if we have a great subsidy from our landfill, or, or how are we able to do this? And so San Antonio is looking at our, oh, operation, see what we're doing, uh, to see what, what they can do better. Now, I know some of the councilmen don't like comparisons, basically, uh, setting things. Councilman Barrera is laughing over here. So, for Mr. Barrera, we, we, we've got, we've got some information that he requested. So that you know, and, and one of the problems with comparing our rates to any other city in the state is I cannot get an apples-to-apples comparison, because the services we provide are unique to Corpus Christi. And the services we provide are listed here, some of them, weekly trash collection, every other week recycling, brush four times per year and bulky twice per year, twelve litter-critter events. We've got a litter collection crew. We have a legal dumping enforcement, graffiti cleanup, dead animal collection. This transfer station's open to residents six days per week, free household hazardous waste disposal, and free brush disposal. That's an amazing list for the twenty-seven dollars a month that we're asking. It, it's a really good value. That still doesn't answer Councilman Barrera's question.
David, can I ask real quick, are we, um, the dead animal, are y'all still checking? You're scanning the animal?
Yes.
Great.
We are. Uh, the majority of our dead animals that we pick up are not just random on the side of the road. It's pets that have passed away. And so we, we go out and we collect these for people who, I mean, if, if you've got a, an animal that passes away, what do you do with it? And, and that's one of the services that we provide.
I, okay, I didn't know that. Thought that was a, like a animal that got hit on the street.
We do that, too.
Okay, but it's both.
It's, it's both. Uh, we, we, we take care of all the dead animal collection within the city.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for continuing to check for the ones that aren't the home pickups.
You bet. Cost of service year over year, this is one of the things that we're looking at. If you look at our re- residential refuse collection, our actual proposed budget went up only two percent. But our residential recycling cost is going up seventeen percent. And part of the cost there is the fact that the res- the, the recycling markets are so variable. Uh, we're in a down cycle right now. It may go the other way, if things change around, it'll go up. Our brush and bulky collection, we're at twenty-one percent increase because we had to add extra trucks and equipment and crews to be able to manage the amount of brush that we're getting. Uh, the disposal, the transfer station cost is going up eight percent. The landfill's only two percent. Our compliance is up eight percent, and the graffiti is one percent, for a total cost increase of eight percent across our budget. Now, the next question asked is, well, why are things going up like they are? Why are our budgets going up? Uh, professional services, things that we pay our consultants to do, that cost is actually going down. Uh, our lease purchase cost is, uh, going up significantly, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Our fuel cost went up more than double.
Wow.
It's, fuel is, I mean, you guys see this every day at the pump, when you go fill up your tank. Our trucks, love them to death, they get about three to four miles per gallon of diesel. But there is no alternative at this point. We've got some CNG vehicles, we're looking at electric vehicles, uh, we're looking at a lot of alternatives, but at this point, the diesel truck is the most efficient and cost-effective unit for this community. Uh, the vehicles and machinery, those are minor vehicles, that cost has gone down. But our total expense, just in those four areas, has gone up almost two million dollars.
Wow. Uh, David, we have a question. Councilman Hernandez?
David, I, I, you know, this is something I wanted to ask for a while on, on our recycling program. Have we looked at other ways of, of promoting a recycling program other than, uh, at how, at-home pickup? I mean, I've seen other cities where they have, like, collection centers, and because right now, people that live in apartments can't recycle, right? Because they use commercial haulers to pick up their, their trash, so they, they don't do the, they don't have a, a recycle truck go pick it up. So how, have we done a financial analysis to see if there was a, a different way to do this?
We, we have done some, uh, work on that. We have not done an in-depth dive at this point. We do have, uh, two locations where they can drop off their recyclables. One of those is at the Republic Facility over on, Agnes, I think it is. And then we've got the transfer station out and on Crosstown. They can currently take their recyclables to that. But when you get into drop-off locations, it kind, it gets pretty complicated, and, and I've, I've run these drop-off locations before. Uh, the education and, and the maintenance of those is, is very difficult, but we, we can look at that again.
Is it any more difficult than what we do with the transfer station? I mean...
Well, it just takes extra personnel and people. If, the more of these you put out there, you really can't put them out unmanned. An unmanned drop-off location just does not work. Uh, I've played that game before, and you run into a lot of troubles, because what I think is recyclable and you think is recyclable may not be the same as what they think is recyclable. And so the amount of trash dumping and, and other abuse to the system is, is enormous. So you almost have to have a manned facility. And so it gets into some extra costs, and so we're looking at some of that.
Okay, I, I guess I want to understand how that's different than, you know, we're sending trucks out, you know, every other week to pick up recycling, and then some areas don't have that, uh, capability. I just want to kind of see what, if you have to have it manned, you know, where would you have, how many would you need? Uh, where would you place them? I mean, and, and would that be a better cost option than, than, uh, picking up directly at the, at people's homes?
We, we can look into that, but I will tell you that the convenience of picking up at people's homes, uh, is greatly, uh, outweighs the, the number of people at the apartment complexes that would utilize the recycling facility. Apartment complex recycling...
I'm a recycler. I have two blue bins.
Yeah.
Okay? I, I recycle, and I usually fill them both up. So I'm, I'm, I'm with you in terms of, of, you know, wanting to recycle. But it's, uh, you know, I'm, I'm also looking at an eighteen, what is it? Eighteen percent cost? Seventeen percent cost increase in our recycling program?
The, the majority of that is because the, the cost of the materials, or the price we get for the materials is down. And a lot of what we do is based on the su- basically the revenue generated by the recyclables. If the recycle market goes up, then that cost goes down. If the recycle market goes down, then it costs us more. And so when you're selling the material and using that as a cost offset, that creates a lot of the issue. And that's where that cost change comes from, because what we're actually doing out there is not that significant difference. It's what we're getting for the materials.
Okay, so you, you basically are telling me we need a cost-benefit analysis of what, whether a program should be, uh, at-home pickup, or collection sites, or whatever, and, and, you know, I'm looking at cost, too, because, you know, the, we're looking at raising rates on water, wastewater, stormwater. Everything's going up. Street user fee, I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's a constant drumbeat that we are looking at. So looking for places to save.
Right.
You know, this, if, if this isn't going to, this is going to be a long-term trend of, of cost increase, cost increase, cost increase. And, you know, I, I want to make sure that we have, if there's other options that may be a bit, uh, more benefit, cost beneficial for us, then let's, let's take a look at it. And you can even take into consideration, you know, um, less recycling and more landfill use, and what that cost would be included in that analysis. But I, I think, you know, let's not do the same thing over and over and expect a different result.
Right, no, and, and I agree with you. And the, the value of the recycling program, uh, there are many that will tell us that, that the, the actual cost of it compared to the value that they get out of the program may, you know, it may not be a direct dollars and cents comparison, but I can put the, I can put the recycled material in the landfill cheaper than I can recycle it. I mean, uh, without a doubt. That, that's, that's an easy, uh, comment to make. But if we're going to have a recycling program, and the wor- the feeling I have is that the council in the past has said we will have a recycling program, then I think we have one of the best recycling programs we can possibly have, even from a cost-benefit analysis.
Well, I'd still like to see.
We, we, we'll work to put something together.
Councilman Pettsley?
Yeah, David, uh, all good information, and I appreciate it very much. Um, going back to page forty-seven at the, at the beginning, you're showing twelve-thousand tons of recycle, recyclables collected annually. So does that remain the same year in and year out? So if you go back to twenty-twenty, were you collecting twelve-thousand tons then, and we're collecting twelve-thousand tons now?
Well, actually, we've reduced the amount, the, part of the problem that we have is that a lot of that tonnage is considered, uh, trash, and so we, we track what we take to it. We were actually collecting fourteen-thousand tons in the past, and so it's dropped down because we removed a lot of the contamination from it, a lot of the things that weren't there. So the, the decrease has been mainly contamination reduction is, is where we are.
Okay. So we still have the, we would want four pickup trucks that have a left-hand steering wheel in them or something?
We were never able to acquire those trucks.
Yeah. Or right-hand steering wheel, I guess it would.
We, we could nev- we could never acquire a right-hand steered small vehicle like we were looking for, so we're using a standard pickup.
Okay, so, but we are having people drive around in, four, four people?
Uh, they've completed the first, uh, round. They've done the entire city one time, and they've started on the city a second time around.
Okay.
And that's what got us our twenty-nine and a half percent decrease.
Okay, so, but even, even, even doing that, we haven't increased significantly the amount of recyclables that we're collecting on a year-in, year-out basis?
That program's not designed to... That program's not designed to increase the recyclables. That portion of the program is designed to decrease the contamination.
No, I realize that, but it's also to educate people on what they can put in as a recyclable, so it goes hand in hand.
Right, and we, that, that's another program, we've got a recycling outreach coordinators, they've been working with the school districts, they've been working with different, uh, civic groups, they've been giving a lot of presentations. They've had discussions at the, or tabletop events at the Hooks Games or the Ice Race. So we have a lot of outreach out there for that. And that's just a matter of helping the people understand the value of recycling.
Okay. Well, it's all, this has always been a concern of mine, that we, you know, we have a recycling program, but we don't seem, it doesn't seem to grow or change and, but yet it costs us more money every year to, to sustain that recycling program. And, and now we're gonna go up on rates to cover that. And, uh, I, I just, it, it, I would like to see some analysis of, when you do a cost be- benefit analysis like Councilman Hernandez is talking about, is how do we think we can increase the amount of recyclables to help drive down the cost of what our program is costing us or, or to sustain?
Okay. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Councilman Baden.
Thank you, Mayor. Here, go ahead and finish this slide that you were gonna do, that, it looks like you put a couple of slides in there for me, so. Go ahead and finish that one, and then I'll ask my questions.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I was gonna wait till you finished, but th- those guys just went on this recycling thing.
Okay, well, th- this is some of the examples of why our expenses are going up. We did increase our pay rate for our drivers. Uh, they were severely underpaid for what they do, we couldn't hire anybody. Uh, if you went over to some of the barbecue joints, they were hiring line servers for more money than what we were paying our drivers. And so we, uh, we were able to increase the pay rate significantly, and, and so that helped us tremendously. The garbage trucks, we, in order to maintain our fleet, we've got over 40 garbage trucks, 44 garbage trucks. In order to maintain a fleet that is operable, we need to replace five garbage trucks a year. That, that's just the main trucks. They went from $336,000 in 2020.
Here, David, could you advance to that slide?
What's that?
The, the advance to that slide, the one that we were talking about?
Uh, am I not on it? Okay. I'm sorry.
No, there, there you go.
There, there we go. So the garbage truck went from $336,000 to $416 in 2023. The costs that I'm getting now are in the $430 to $450,000 range, if you can buy one. And so that is a significant cost increase. And remember, I need five of those a year. The brush trucks have gone up from 149,000 to 207,000. Uh, the self-loading trucks have gone up as well. And, and every truck, as you go down there, has gone up significantly. And we cannot operate without the trucks. I mean, that, that is who we are, our garbage trucks. Uh, the refuse carts, back in 2020, they were at 42.50. Last year, they were at 62. This year, they've come back down to $55, but that's still a significant increase in cost over several years ago. And the other thing with the carts is that we're expanding the city. The London ISD area, I don't know how many new rooftops have gone in out there, but we're having to provide them with new garbage tra- or garbage carts, new refuse carts. And those are additional expenses for us. So our cost of the refuse carts going up is significant. We show you our increase in the diesel ca- cost of 86.4% and the increase of unleaded at 63.5%. Those are significant expenses that we have to, uh, have to pay. Uh, you know, we spend for diesel about $170,000 a month, just for diesel. I mean, we, we can't operate out, operate without the equipment and, and the fuel to make it go. So those are some of the issues. And remember, we have not had a cost increase in four years, or a, a rate increase in four years. Our costs have gone up every year since then.
And David, thank, thank you very much for putting that all together. Uh, that, that helps us to at least validate some of this. And, and I, I really, I think, uh, at least from what I've seen so far, you've, 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 uh, made that clearer than any other department. I, I just, uh, I just challenge you a little bit further, and, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, but... Is that the thing I've been saying is that how are we measuring our efficiencies and deficiencies? And, you know, I've always said that the benchmark is not what everybody else is doing. Yeah, we can look at best practices other than seeing, u- unless you say that this others' community is doing this, just like they're calling you and say, what is it that you're doing that makes you so efficient? Uh, one day I'll share with you a, a, a personal experience I had and what, uh, I, I had an operation when I was in the restaurant business. And, uh, the, everybody had different standards. And mine, at the time, was the most inefficient. And so what happened was, they went back and, I went back and compared everybody's, and they were operating under a, a lower standard than I was. And I was upset, and so what they did is, company-wide, they brought the standards over to mine, and everybody was upset with me because they had to operate more efficiently. So, I, I commend you for that, but that's the thing, I, I challenge you to look at that. And I say, in this high-technology world, you know, how do we know that? What, you know, Gil brought it up the other day, what is it, uh, there's a, there's a cost per passenger associated, that's how the RTA does it.
Right.
You know, and, and a cost per mile, but go ahead.
What, what, one of the things that we have done over the last several years is we look at how long it takes us to complete a route, how, how late the guys are staying out. It's two years ago, we had trucks that were still out on the streets picking up trash at seven, eight, nine o'clock at night. Now, they're going home on time.
Yeah.
Majority of the time, the trash trucks are in the office, are in the yard and buttoned up at quitting time. And so that's a significant increase in our efficiency in getting things done. And part of that is the fact that we've got more drivers now. When, when you don't have drivers or you don't have trucks. When I took over, we had trucks that were 12 and 15 years old. Keeping a 15-year-old garbage truck on the road is almost impossible.
Yeah.
And so we've reduced the age of our fleet, our goal is eight, eight years per truck. And that allows us to keep the trucks on the road. If they're broken down, they're not picking up trash. And so my measure of efficiency is, are the trucks in the yard, is, is today's trash picked up today? Because remember, we can't wait for tomorrow to pick up today's trash. At the end of the day, we're going home, that doesn't work. You know, uh, other departments might be able to put off till tomorrow what they didn't get done today, that's not one of our luxuries.
Yeah.
All the trash is picked up today, all the trash is buried today, it, it goes home. And so that's, that's our, our measure of efficiency.
Thank, thank you very much. And, and, you know, one other thing that I might add, uh, you know, I was talking to somebody the other day that asked me, are you still losing money in recycling? And, um, I said, um, what is it? And this is where more of the liberal side of me comes out, is that I, I look at it from the same way as healthcare. Yeah, there's a cost associated with getting preventive care, right? And there's a cost associated with that. Is there anything you get in return? Well, you get a longer lifespan, you get a healthier lifespan. And that's really what we're trying to do, we're trying to extend, number one, you know, the lifespan of our environment. And there's a cost associated with that. Now, if we can extend that, and then, you know, I, I'm sure there's some factor somewhere or another that we're spending that less much money on the landfill because we're, we're extending that out even further. So there's a cost associated with that, and it's just very hard to calculate, so.
Yes, sir.
All right, now, thank you very much, David.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay, David, I think we have one more comment, Mr. Hernandez. You have a quick comment?
Overtime. Always talked about overtime with you guys, especially the sludge hauling and how, you know, you, you know, I, you said you had issues with, uh, you know, not having enough drivers. Can you kind of give me an idea of what your, how you determine your overtime?
Specifically with, you, you mentioned the sludge hauling operation. That is one where we are really tied into our customer base, if you will. The sludge hauling is servicing the wastewater plants. And they operate seven days a week. Our landfill's not open seven days a week, so we have to accomplish seven days' worth of work in six days. So that crew starts very early. And they're very dependent upon how much sludge is generated and when the sludge is generated. And then they also help service the parks department dumpsters. So that's more of a historical average than anything else. Uh, we just take a look at what we spent in the past on it, what, where we are. And then we compare that with the cost of putting in another crew, if you will, additional trucks and people to make it work. And at this point, it's been more cost-effective for that particular, uh, unit to, to use the overtime. There, there's a break-even point that at a certain point, and you know this, you, you, overtime is a cheaper operate, option than adding personnel and equipment until you reach a certain percentage. And in our analysis, we haven't reached that percentage on the sludge hauling.
Okay, your sludge hauling is, I mean, I mean, it's a, it's a, in some cases, I mean, I, I kind of looked at it year over year. I mean, it's, it, 40, 30, 20% in those ranges. I mean, you, uh, it seems like, uh, it, adding another truck and a driver would probably alleviate some of that. I mean, you also got to think of quality of life for those guys. Same way, would you, you know, you want them in at quitting time and going home at a reasonable time. Is, is that the case you have with these sludge haulers?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, if you, if you have that significant amount of overtime, where's that overtime coming from? Is it in the evenings, is it night, you have, I mean?
A, a lot of it's on weekends, for the most part.
So it's a quality of life issue, too, it's not just, uh...
Okay. But, but the, the, we're, we're gonna be working weekends anyway, because that, we, we cannot complete...
Why is that an overtime issue when you have, uh, you know, if you change your work week, Tuesday to Saturday, or, and you rotate people? I mean, it's not...
We, we, we'll definitely look into that.
Right, yeah, what I'm saying is that, you know, if you're looking at, at, you just got to have a process improvement there because it's just, it continues. I wanted to ask another question on recycling. Like, uh, recycling at, at our city facilities or, or even other government entities? I mean, I, I don't think, I was at the auditorium not too long ago, and there's not a recycling bin anywhere.
Our auditorium?
Notory.
Oh, the net, okay.
Which is kind of, it's not really ours completely. It, you know, we, we, we operate the basketball court.
Right.
The CCIC is responsible for the, uh, but there's, I mean, there's no recycling there.
Right.
And, and part of the issue that we have is that we, as a city, uh, department, we are geared almost exclusively towards residential collection. And, and that is where we are. We provide residential tracks, trash collection. We pick up a few commercial accounts along the side, but with a residential-type collection machine. Uh, the, the trucks are residential in nature. In order to expand the recycling to apartment complexes, in order to expand it to bigger facilities, we would have to switch over to a, more of a commercial-type truck and, uh, collection system. And we can do that, but the cost of that is exceptionally expensive, and we don't currently have a customer base in those areas.
Oh, I, I, I'm fully understanding, you're kind of making my argument for me on some of these things. But the, like, you have a, an education program budgeted, right, for your recycling?
Right.
Uh, I want to say, you have, you have that set up, and you have them in school districts, right? You teach kids about recycling, right? How many, how many of our school districts recycle?
Probably not many of them, and if they are, it's on a very small scale. But in order for them to do that, they have to contract with a private hauler. And so that's part of the issue, is that the, the private haulers in town cannot or will not provide the services at a cost that they can afford. And so, it, it, you know, trying to get into those other entities with a re- and once again, we have a residential system, so it's very difficult for me to, uh, provide them any help or assistance.
Okay, I, maybe you can give us a, maybe you can tell us who recycles? School districts, Delmar, University, I'm sure they have something. Or if they don't, we should know. Uh, it seems like if we could do these education programs and we don't have the training for the kids at the school that they don't recycle, it doesn't transfer over to the residents.
Well, I, I mean, no, because you're learning it, you come home and, and, you know, you're, a, a child is gonna maybe talk about it or tell their parents, or, I don't know, but my kid, your kids recycle.
Well, I, well, that's because of me, right?
You taught them.
I enforce the recycling.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yeah, whatever you go. Anyway, in the spirit of time, go, we're gonna, we're gonna move on.
All right, well, I, I just, I want to say that, you know, sometimes left and right hand aren't working together here.
Left and right, funny saying. Uh, Councilman Roy.
So my question's not on recycling, but I, I know when I was on council the first time, operationally, you guys pulled some of your services in, in-house, right? If I remember, um, in terms of just, uh, maintaining your site, right?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I, I think you had an outside company...
Landfill?
At the landfill.
We still do, we switched the company, but we still...
Switched the company?
Yeah, we still rely on the private sector to push and pack, as they call it, the landfill.
Okay.
Yeah, so at the Sepia Valenswell, the big landfill.
Yeah.
We don't manage the daily, you can explain it, David, but, yeah, go ahead.
And, and, and actually, that is, uh, the, actually, the next slide is talking about that particular one. Our enhancement, number one, is in, is increasing our cost of our annual contracts. And the major one we're talking about here is what we call the push-and-pack contract at the landfill. And this is where we pay a company to come in and take the trash that is delivered, spread it out and compact it. And when we went out for bid, the city put together a bid packet, and we competed against the private sector, and they beat us by 25 cents a ton. Okay? So we had what we thought was a very good bid, uh, they came in and they beat us by 25 cents a ton, and they beat all the other competitors by probably three, $3 plus a ton.
How's that working for you?
It is working phenomenal. We, we did a couple of things really unique with this contract, and this is, I, I'd love to brag on it, but we put in a volume-based pricing system so that if the volume goes above a certain amount, we get a price cut on the cost per ton. If it drops below a certain amount, they get a little bit more per ton in order to make it work. And this company beat us on, on every one of those metrics. The other thing we did is we put in a bonus that if they make, uh, manage to reach a certain compaction rate, that they get a bonus for that. Under the previous contract, they got paid the same, no matter what their compaction was. And we were getting maybe 1,000 pounds per cubic yard, maybe 1,100. We're now getting over 1,600 pounds per cubic yard, which is a 60% increase in compaction, which means that's a 60% increase in the life of that landfill because they get a bonus. We've given them an incentive to do that. This company we have now is just doing us a phenomenal job. And, uh, the annual price increase that we have is, is capped at 5%. They managed to do it this last year, even though their costs went up significantly more than 5%. So that is this next revenue enhancement, uh, a big portion of that is the landfill push-and-pack cost. And they're doing an absolutely bang-up job.
Councilor Roy. I mean, Pesley, sorry.
Yeah, I, David, just to end up, I, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. I thought it was very detailed, and I appreciated all the numbers. Uh, but also wanted to thank you and your staff. I, I hardly ever receive a phone call or an email or anything complaining about your department or something that you've done. I think y'all do a spectacular job, and it's a very tough business that you're in. And, and I sincerely appreciate all the effort that y'all put into this, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, we, we've got an excellent team. I'm very proud of the team that I work with.
You should be.
So our enhancement, number two, is a telescopic boom lift. This is to allow us to repair the wind screens at our current transfer station. I don't know if you've driven past the transfer station lately, but it is, I, I wasn't here when it was built, and I'm amazed that we built a transfer station with chain-link walls in a town where the wind never blows, right? Uh, we've got chain-link walls, and then we put wind screens across those to reduce the wind movement, to keep the trash from blowing out. And every time the wind blows, those wind screens, the fasteners break on it, and then we have to put them back up. Several years ago, we had a employee with a brilliant idea, we were using zip ties to put the wind screens up, so he wired them up. He thought that was a great idea, and it sounds reasonable, except the next time we had a wind, it just shredded the wind screens. And so we found out that those zip ties are actually working as a fuse or a cotter pin, uh, shear pin, if you will, so that when the wind reaches a certain amount, that the tie breaks and maintains the integrity of the wind screen. But then, currently, in order to put them back up, we have to go through the procurement process, we have to go out for bid, we have to rent a high-boom lift... process, we have to go out for bid, we have to rent a high boom lift, and we've been doing that about four times a year. And in the meantime, in between times, we, we just can't keep the wind screens up. And so this will give us the ability to maintain the wind screens, maintain the lighting in it, and do all the other things that we need to do on a, a routine basis. And so that's enhancement number two. Enhancement number three is a slow-speed shredder. This is twofold. One, it's to help us shred tires, and the other's to shred brush to reduce the volume that we haul to the new compost facility. We currently spend $80,000 a year to dispose of tires. Fleet spends another $10,000 to $12,000 a year to dispose of their tires, and they're hauled away and shredded, and most of them probably either end up in a, a cement kiln or a power plant someplace or in another landfill. By purchasing the shredder, we will be able to shred our own tires, landfill them locally, and then we will be able to repay the cost of that shredder. You know, ninety, ninety to $100,000 years in expenses, we can pay back in about four years the cost of purchasing the shredder. And in addition to that, we'll have the ability to reduce the volume of brush going to the landfill. And so it's a very cost-effective program that will reduce our costs and increase our efficiency. When we get this program, we will be able to make a low-cost tire disposal available to many of the customers in town, the tire dealers that are currently spending a, a large dollar number to have them hauled away, and we, we can do that as well. One of our biggest problems with illegal dumping in the city, if you're not aware of it, are tires.
Yes.
If you go out to many of the bays and estuaries, there's tires, tires, tires everywhere.
Plato Road, tires.
They're, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
And so by getting a way that we can handle them quickly, efficiently, and locally, and cheaply, I think will benefit the city and help, help the beautification as well.
Great. Councilman Klein.
Thank you, David. Just thinking about tires, has there been any thought about possibly reusing shredded tires, or is that too further, too far down the road yet?
I, I've been in this business for over 30 years, and I've played with lots of different ways to reuse shredded tires. And I will tell you that there are far more tires out there than there are ways to reuse them. You look, every tire, every car in town has four tires, and every house has several cars, and just the sheer volume of tires is such that reusing them is very, very difficult. The level of processing is very high. The people who design and build tires are very, very smart people. They put those tires together, and they designed them not to come apart.
Right.
And so in order to reuse them, you have to reduce them.
Yeah.
And, and take them apart, and it's very, very difficult and very, very expensive.
I, I've heard of some communities utilizing this to be very finely shredded tire material into asphalt.
That, that has been done throughout the state. Ernie's probably a much better expert on that than I am. But once again, the number of tires that can be used and the number of tires we have, it's a drop in the bucket.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
David, thank you. We don't, we don't have any other comments or questions. We really appreciate your great presentation.
Thank you.
And your team. Okay.
Okay, great. We're going to end on a great note, not that David just didn't have one, but we have Alma Casas, who wants to talk to us about our updated tax rate.
Okay.
And so today, we're going to conclude by talking about a tax rate reduction.
Okay.
That was not in the original proposed budget because we did not have the certified values from the appraisal district, but we have them now.
Okay.
And staying within our state law requirements on revenue caps, we're recommending a reduction in the, in the property tax rate effective this fiscal year, or this tax year.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Alma.
Hi, Alma. Good morning. We're still morning, right?
We, no.
Lunch, sorry. Alma Casas, Interim Director of Finance and Procurement, here to talk to, to you about the property taxable value and exemptions on our tax rate. So, on this first slide, you'll see our current tax rate is .620261. We are going to be proposing .599774. Now, our property values, we did have an increase of 13.46%. Of that new value was 2.17%, and reappraisals were 11.29%. We received our truth and taxation, our calculation from the Tax Assessor Collector's Office, and we finalized our number just this week. Now, we have the state law that limits us on our MNO. We cannot exceed the 3.5% cap, and we are going to be proposing the reduction for our FY '24 tax rate. So, our current property tax rate is .620261. Our proposed tax rate will be .599774, which is our voter approval rate also, and our new, no new rate, our no new revenue rate is .553858. Immediate relief. The citizens will be provided immediate relief by adopting a tax rate lower than the current tax rate. Notice requirements. I need to draw your attention to this because the truth and taxation requirement mandate that we publish our notice of public hearing in a newspaper and on our website with the proposed rate that was taken on that voter, you know, when we had our meeting on July 25th, we had that record vote. At the time, we did not have our calculation yet for the voter approval rate. So at the time, the, the rate that was proposed was no greater than .620261. We know that we're going to be adopting, or not adopting, recommending .599774. However, for the notice requirements, and I spoke with the, the Tax Assessor's Office, for the notice requirements, it has to, we have to publish the rate that we took the, the record vote on. Even though we know now that we're going to adopt a lower rate, that has to come out. So the notice is going to be deceiving because it's going to show that we're going to propose a rate of .620261, and then it's going to list on there the voter approval rate of .599774. So it looks like we're going to do an increase.
Right.
So I called them, and I said, wait a minute, you know, and they said, we understand, they said, that's just the notice requirements, we have to do that. And I said, well, how can we get around it? And they said, you would have to take another record vote, have another meeting, take another record vote. Well, we wouldn't be able to meet our deadlines. So, they said, same thing, they said, you're doing the same thing as the county. The county does the same thing. They took a record vote on a certain date, you know, did it on that, and that's not probably going to be what they're going to be recommending. But I needed to let you know because it's going to come out on Sunday's newspaper, and you're going to see it and think, wait a minute, this is not what we're going to propose. And that's correct, but per notice requirements, we have to do it that way.
Are we clear? Okay? Anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, sir.
So, it's going to come out in this Sunday's paper?
Yes, sir.
So we would have to have a meeting to vote on the reduced rate before it comes out?
Well, I mean, we can cancel the, we can cancel the publication, but we would have to have another meeting, take another record vote, and then do the notice again in the newspaper, but I don't know that we.
We meet down here almost daily, why couldn't we do that?
Would we want to do that?
Is there a deadline involved, or is there something? No, Sunday's paper would be too late, but, so is it too late altogether if we don't put it in by Sunday?
Is the, is the advertisement required by this point in time? Like, do you have to do it by this date, by this Sunday?
It's, oh, I don't have the calendar with me.
That's the question, because we have to see this.
Right.
You know, you have to publish things by a point in time. What we're doing is going to be unpopular enough as it is without us lying to the public, and that's exactly what we're doing.
It, it has to be seven days before the public hearing. So we could do it the following week. I can call the, the newspaper and cancel the publication for this week.
I'd highly recommend that.
And then it would be the correct, what tells?
Then, then we would have a, another meeting, take another record vote on the lower rate.
Right.
Then publish that in the newspaper, and then go on from there.
Yeah, I think that would, that would.
Be better.
Relieve a lot of confusion.
Okay.
And, and let me hear what some others have to say. Councilman Roy?
If I remember right, this has happened before, right?
Yes.
And it was unbelievable. I think.
You're going to get calls.
I, I wore an armored vest for about three weeks.
Yes.
No, but I think if we can, if we can fix this.
Yeah. I remember because we repeated it. Mayor McCombe was repeating it over and over.
Yes.
Yeah. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay.
If you could go back a couple of slides to the page where you have the no new tax rate of 55 cents?
Yes, sir.
No new revenue rate. So, the difference is about 7%, right? 7.6% between the no new revenue rate and the voter, voter approval rate. But we're capped at 3.5% on maintenance and operations, so is the rest of that debt service?
Is the debt service, yes, sir.
And what is our current debt for the city? And this, wait a minute, this is just tax-supported debt, right?
Yes. You're talking about the debt service rate?
What is our, our current debt service, tax-supported?
Tax rate.
Or what is our, our current debt, tax-supported debt?
The amount of debt or the tax rate?
The amount of debt.
Of debt, oh. Oh, I don't, I don't have that with me. The tax.
And I, I ask this all the time because we, it's not just the tax, it's also the revenue bonds that are the debt for the overall city.
I, I can get you that, sir.
And I mean, at the, and we only kind of publish it once a year for, at, at the audited amount, and I think the last year was 1.4 billion.
Right.
Combined.
Yes.
But this is only for taxpayer-supported debt.
Yes, which is, I, I can almost tell you, I mean, I know it's going to be less than 10 million, but I'm not sure exactly how much because, but I, I can get you that number.
Okay, so what we're effectively saying is that we're reducing your tax rate to 59 cent, 59.9 or just shy of 60 cents.
Yes.
Per that $100 valuation, but we're actually increasing your taxes by 7.6%.
Because of the increase in value.
Because of the increases.
It's in value.
So we're.
Appraisals.
Even though it's a tax reduction.
Yes.
A tax rate reduction, it's still a tax increase.
It's a double-edged sword, but it would be higher if we didn't lower that tax rate.
If we didn't lower the rate, right.
Just like last year.
Right. So like last year, we reduced it by 2 cents, but the.
2.6.
The greater, it was a greater tax reduction than what we're proposing here, right?
Yeah, it was 2.6 cents last year.
Right, and this would be 2 cents.
2.6 cents, but in terms of the.
The impact.
The amount of actual tax increase from the no new revenue.
Okay.
Yes, there's, it's a greater stretch this year.
It's a greater stretch this year.
Yes.
So we actually, you know, we actually went through that whole exercise of, okay, well, what do we cut to reduce that even more?
Right.
From 7%. Because I mean, I mean, last year was a whole discussion.
Yes.
It was actually 11% increase, and we had to go through and knock out all the one-time expenditures, a lot of the one-time expenditures.
Yes.
Okay, so the news is rate, tax rate reduction.
Yes.
Tax increase of 7.6%.
Due to valuations. Yes, Councilman.
Right. Well, I mean, it doesn't matter.
On average.
On average.
On average.
7.6, 7.6% tax rate increase. Or tax increase, thank you.
On average, yeah. Councilman Barreda.
So, how much revenue then? What's the difference in the revenue? So, if between the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate, at, at the total dollar amount?
Let me see if I have that.
Because we're still going up to, there's still, we're still moving to the 3.5%.
Yes. That is based on the, the 26, our total taxable value. So that is 20, 26 billion, 309, 791, 877.
26.
That's the value.
Okay, okay, so how much?
That, and the difference between that and our, our.
You, you can get it back for me later.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just.
Because that's another line.
Yeah, I'm just curious that how much, I mean, 4 cents is obviously a lot.
Yes.
But I, I just want to know how much more money it, 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 what, what would be the impact to the budget if it went down?
Okay.
That's all, that's all I want to know. What, what, how much actual revenue comes from the voter approval rate, and how much actual revenue comes from the no new revenue rate?
And you'll send that to everyone, Peter? That'll be part of the?
That'll be part of our budget response, yes. We sent one memo last Friday, we'll send another one tomorrow. If this answer's not in there, it'll be in the subsequent one.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we're sending a memo once a week.
Okay, thank you. Is that all you have, sir?
Yeah.
Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, Mayor. That was one of the questions I was going to ask, too, to get a little bit more of the analytical data. But can we also, Alma, is it possible on the, like, the 13.64 and the 13.46?
Yes.
And the aggregate dollar totals? Can you break those, the percentages and the dollar totals by commercial and residential?
Sure.
And the change in those from year to year?
Yes.
I think it'd be helpful for us to understand, too, the impact to the actual homeowners versus the commercial. Thank you.
Okay.
Good question. Councilman.
On the other, I'm sorry, on the other one, Constance just came up and said it's about 10 million difference between the two, the two numbers of the no new revenue and the voter approval. About 10 million.
That's all? That's all?
So.
Okay. Councilman Hernandez?
Yeah, I'm sorry, one other question.
Yes, sir.
Out of that 7.6% increase total, 3.5% is MNO, so the other half of it is an increase for debt service, correct?
Well, debt service is not going up. The, the tax rate is staying, is remaining the same.
I'm not talking about the rate.
Oh.
I'm talking about the values.
You're talking about the debt, oh.
Um, no, 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 no. Okay, we have a certain amount of debt that we have to cover.
Yes.
And so our tax increases, and I say tax increases, the no new revenue increase, right?
The no new revenue.
Okay. Semantics, right? Okay, so we, we're capped at 3.5% for no new revenue rate for maintenance and operation, but we're talking 7, 7.6%. So the rest of that is an increase for debt service, right?
For debt.
For debt, to pay for debt, right? So, in the last bond election, we said that we were putting out debt that would not increase the taxes.
Right.
Okay, but yet we have here an increase in taxes to cover debt.
I need to check.
Okay.
Because that's.
You, you, you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah. There's, but those no.
Well, why don't you do the math behind this and help me understand, because if, we were, if we sold no, no, no tax increase on the, on the debt we were putting out there, and then we have a tax increase on the debt, I want to understand that. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Pesley?
Yeah, so on page 65, where you show the net assessed values for current year and proposed year?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a chart in here anywhere? I've tried to find it, where we showed what the assessed value on the average homestead was for last year, to show what the increase in valuations were for the average?
From last year?
So, we don't have that here?
I don't have that, but I can get that for you.
Okay. So, Councilman Hernandez said it was, what, 7.?
7.6% from the no new revenue rate to the proposed new voter rate.
Is that, you're talking about tax rate, or you're talking about the appraisal?
From the, the tax rate, not the appraisal, but just the tax rate, there's a 7% difference, I guess, between the-
From the no new revenue to the-
From the no new revenue rate to the voter approval rate.
Voter approval.
So, that's a tax increase, or what we used to call the effective tax rate-
Right, effective tax.
Of 7.6%, right?
Based on the certificate, I mean, on the values, yes.
On the values, based on the values, right? Now, the no, no new revenue rate increase, I guess, is what you're, what we're calling it now, used to be called the effective tax rate.
Yes.
Okay. So, if we're capped at 3.5%, so 3.5% of that 6.7% is maintenance and operation, right? That's max we can go. So, the rest of it is debt service.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
So, that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Okay, so, but I'm interested in what the net assessed values were for last year.
Okay. I can get you that.
Okay.
You, so you want me to run this, this same slide, this scenario with last year's numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it'd just be another box, so you'd have last year's current tax rate, proposed?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we can look at the, the difference. Because that's, that's what everybody's going to, that's what everybody's calling me and saying, "Yeah, you're telling us you're going to reduce the tax rate, but my valuations went up, you know, exponentially from last year."
They did, yes.
So, I'm really not going to see any tax reduction, and you're going to go up on all my fees. And I know that's not your deal, but I'm just saying that's-
But the reality is, we are. I mean, I know it works.
Yeah.
You know, but, but we are. We are lowering the tax rate.
Right.
And we don't set the valuation. It is affected by, both are affected with one another, but it's our job to, I mean, it's, it's better to lower than not, right?
Nobody believes that, Mayor.
I know.
And it's just like when-
No, I know.
When our lake levels drop, 75% of these people in this city believe that the city of Corpus Christi controls that.
The what?
When, when we do releases-
Oh, right.
For the mandated releases.
Yeah.
They blame us. They blame the city.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on?
I'm sorry, one other question.
Okay, both, sir.
Just, I'm sorry, one other question, because this is what we're voting on for the, I mean, for the total amount of budget, we're voting on for approved budget, but it automatically gets amended the following day with anything that rolls over from the previous year. So, I want to have an idea of what is unencumbered, that's, that is from last year to the coming year, both in our general fund, our enterprise, whatever funds we have. I want to understand what that dollar amount is, because that is something we don't see. If it's encumbered, that it's already, you know, accounted for, I'm not worried about that. I want the unencumbered amounts.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Alma, okay, I think that's all. We can move on to property tax exemptions?
Yes. So, on this slide, we have our current exemption, where we're going, the homestead exemption, we're talking about the homestead exemption and the over 65 disabled. The current at .599774, going from 50,000 to 62 for the over 65, and from 10 to 15% on the homestead exemption. The revenue impact would be 4,085,000 for the homestead, and for the over 65 and disabled would be 2,150. For proposed 2026, the revenue impact would also be 4,085,000. Now, we have a sample tax bill. On this one, we're proposing, it's the increase from the 10% to the 15%. The homestead exemption, we have the assessed value of the 265,923, less the homestead exemption at 10%, gives us a net assessed value of 239,000. Multiply that by our new rate of .599774, gives us property taxes of 1435. We do the same thing with the 15% exemption. So, instead of the 26,592, now we're subtracting 39,888. Those property taxes come out to 1356 for an annual savings of $79. On this slide, we are doing the same thing with the, this is year one of, for 2025, going from the 10% to the 15%. We're taking the assessed value, less the exemption, giving it, and then less the current over 65, which is 50,000, giving us a net assessed value of 189,000. Multiply that by .599774, gives us property taxes of 1136. We do the same thing, moving from 10 to 15%, and taking the, the over 65 from 50,000 to 62.5. That property tax comes out to 981. So, the total annual savings is 155. Now, for a combined two-year, doing the same thing with a two-year, after two years, it would be 159, going from the 15 to 20% in year two for 2026. Moving on, proposed increases of general homestead exemption, over 65, going from the 15% to the 20% and the over 65. We're doing the same thing. For the property taxes, with the 15% is 981, and with the 20%, it's 901, for an annual savings of $80, but a combined two-year annual savings of $235. And that's it.
Okay. Alma, great. Great presentation. Thank you. You've got a lot to bring back.
Yes, I do. And, and schedule the meeting.
Yes, right, and schedule the meeting. So, we will-
Actually, we're going to try to do the vote on Tuesday. We'll put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Put it on the agenda tomorrow.
Oh, perfect.
So, it'll be on Tuesday, City Council agenda.
And then you'll advertise that.
We'll advertise next Sunday, or whenever.
We'll do it the following Sunday. That's no problem.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, thank you, Alma. Thank you, Constance, Eddie, everybody. Is that all?
That concludes our workshop for today, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Wonderful. Let's see, our next one is next week. Okay, until Thursday, right? But we have a community meeting this evening.
There's, there's no workshops next week. So, next week, there's, there's no workshops on the budget next week?
Oh, no.
No.
Okay, so there's no work-
No workshops, but two community meetings next week.
But do we have any more workshops left?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yeah.
Just not next week?
Right, not next week. The following week, I believe we have two the following week. Including the, yeah.
Yeah. So, tonight, we have a community meeting.
Yes.
District 3, Water Utilities on Holly Road for District 3.
Yes, ma'am.
And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.